One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'll now call a roll. Commissioner President White.
Present.
Commissioner Vice President Webb.
Present.
Commissioner Andrews.
Present.
Commissioner Gray.
Present.
Commissioner Dr. Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Hembry. Commissioner Hembry. Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Malone.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Also present this evening is Mr. Rashawn K. Hassan Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Cameron N. Cox Chief Financial Officer Board Secretary, Dr. Elizabeth Philippatos Chief of Student Services, Dr. Jean Gordon Chief of Instruction and Program, Chief Carlotta Jones Chief of Human Resources, Chief Bashan L. Hill Chief of Marketing and Communications, Mrs. Khalifa Shabazz Esquire General Counsel, Mr. Jeffrey A. Morton Assistant Board Secretary. Thought I saw our student commissioners, but maybe they are at the other.
They're on the other side. They're present.
Okay.
Ms. Masala and Ms. Caliphak are here.
Ms. Masala and Ms. Caliphak are here present for the student commissioners. Madam President, we do have a quorum. Welcome to the business meeting of the Plainfield Board of Education. Members hope that you will find this meeting interesting and informative. We thank you for taking the time out to attend. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the media and public consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and that the advance notice required therein has been provided to the Courier News. Tap into Plainfield on March seven, excuse me, on Monday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five to be advertised on Friday, April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and also provided to the Plainfield Public Schools District website, the Plainfield City Clerk, Police Department, and Plainfield Public Library for posting. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening to those of you here with us present in person. We do have viewers virtually, so good evening to you all as well. Welcome to our April business meeting. I have a few brief remarks to share and some updates regarding some things happening within our district, which will be followed by our highlight video, of course, that we play every month. As we begin tonight's meeting, I want to take a moment to ground us in the reason we are all here, which is for our students. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Okay. Amidst the important issues we handle on behalf of the district, we must never lose sight of why we do what we do. Every vote, every policy, every conversation is all for our students. Throughout our district, we are fortunate to have some incredibly talented and intelligent young scholars. We also have amazing administrators, teachers, support staff, and countless others who pour into our students daily. Whether it's in the classroom, in the cafeteria, on the bus, or on the field, these are the people who help us teach, nurture, inspire, and cultivate the whole child. That is worth celebrating always. April is Autism Awareness Month, and I want to take a moment to acknowledge the April is Autism Awareness Month, and I want to take a moment to acknowledge the importance of creating inclusive environments where all of our students feel seen, supported, and valued. Let us continue to raise awareness around autism, promote understanding, and embrace neurodiversity, not just in April, but every day. This month is also filled with wonderful activities within our district. This coming Thursday, we will celebrate Bring Your Child to Work Day. I'm excited about the fun activities that the district has planned to engage our future leaders. We are also gearing up for Cardinal Victory Day, where we'll celebrate the amazing historical accomplishments of our basketball team. And while we're talking about sports, our spring sports season is in full swing, and I want to take a moment to encourage everybody, students, staff, families, and community members, to get out and support our student athletes. These young people work hard, not only on the field, but in the classroom, as they represent Plainfield with excellence and true cardinal pride. I also want to take a moment to share with you all, in case you don't know, as I encourage you to attend the games, our baseball team's record is two and two, our softball team record is one, two, and one. Our boys volleyball record is six and two, boys tennis, one and zero, our girls flag football team, one and two. Boys and girls track and field have all been medaled at multiple track meets throughout their spring season thus far, and we do have our esports team at six and one in Rocket League, and three and three in Smash Brothers.
All right.
If you do not know what those games are, then ask one of our students. We also have an esports tournament coming up. I don't know if we have an actual title, it's a national tournament, correct?
The National Plainfield's National Esports Invitational.
Yes, so we have that coming up, and we have teams ranging all over the nation, coming from as far as California, and that will be a multi-day event, and I was informed by our deputy superintendent that the students from the California team and our students will be going over to New York to engage in some activities, some fun activities, for them to let their hair down and just have fun. But it's my understanding that while we know some of our students may or may not have ever been to New York, although they live in New Jersey, the students from California, a lot of them have never been to New York, so it's a great opportunity for them to go over there and just get a chance to enjoy themselves while they're over here. So in addition to that, I just want to share that I've heard many great things happening in our schools lately across the district in multiple schools, elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools, and I want to make sure that we all stay informed and uplift all the good that's happening across the district. Our students and staff are always doing amazing things, and they deserve for their stories to be told and for their stories to be heard. So with that, I'd love to share the highlight video showcasing just a few of those moments, and just make sure that we reflect on our shared commitment to student success. Nick, you can cue up the video. Thank you, Nick, and as always, thank you to our marketing team, our media and marketing team, for putting that video together. So before I finish my remarks, I just want to share that a few of our commissioners did go to the two thousand and twenty-five NSBA Annual Conference, and I want to just take a moment for us to share some of what we experienced there while at the conference, whether it be just fellowshipping and networking with our fellow, with fellow board members across the nation, or whether it was actually attending some of the sessions and the luncheon and the activities. All of us, along with some of the administrators within the district as well, attended the pre-conference workshop. So I'm just going to share my experience, a little bit about my experience, about how we went. It was in Atlanta, and it was very enlightening and inspiring. The focus of this year's conference was centered on accelerating student success and strengthening school operations, which is deeply aligned with the goals that we are striving for here at Plainfield Public Schools. One of the most impactful experiences was the pre-conference site visit. We actually visited Atlanta College and Career Academy, where we had an up-close and personal look at the daily operations of their model institution that is reshaping student outcomes across Atlanta public schools. So that school, I would say, is similar to what we have over at Union County Technical Vocational High School, where we have a bunch of different schools who utilize that school. They go half-time, some go full-time, but their integrative, innovative curriculum, very accelerated, allows their students to complete full career pathways in just one academic year. So through this rigorous program, the students earn industry certificates and college credits, which positions them to seamlessly transition into college, high-demand careers, and beyond, and they make sure that they focus those careers on the highest, the careers that are the most effective and the most broad in that Atlanta area. This forward-thinking approach is exactly the kind of investment our students deserve, one that meets them with purpose and prepares them for the future with both opportunity and confidence. Among the conference sessions, one in particular that stood out was revolutionizing school attendance, the Six Principles of Equitable Engagement. As chronic absenteeism remains a persistent challenge in school districts nationwide, Plainfield is no exception. This session offered a powerful equity-centered framework that reimagines attendance not just as a number, but as a reflection of student connection, value, and belonging. The presenters passionately share strategies to transform school culture and ensure every student is seen, supported, and motivated to attend. The dialogue in the room from presenters to educators and board members alike was both thought-provoking and solution-oriented, leaving us energized with practical tools and a renewed commitment to meet students where they are. As we continue striving to improve both instruction and operations within Plainfield Public Schools, the insight gained from this conference is a reminder that innovation, equity, and intentionality are the keys to unlocking our students' full potential. It was a very good conference. This year was one of the best I've been to, especially, as I mentioned earlier, with the pre-conference site visit. We really got to engage with the students and understand how they're being impacted and how much of a difference it's making on their educational experience. Something that we definitely want to ensure that we're cultivating here with our CTE pathways and our program that we have currently and that we're going to continue to bring into our district to make sure that our students are getting the full benefit from that. And of course, in addition to our partnerships that we have with the universities in the area where our students are getting college credits and able to move on to ultimately get college credits that move towards their associates as they graduate here from Plainfield Public Schools. So that's what I have to share. I'll now open the floor to commissioners who would like to share on their experience, because five of us went along with some administrators. Any commissioners?
Good evening. At the National School Board Association Workshop in Atlanta, I had the privilege of attending a session titled Communicating Through Crisis and Controversy. In a room filled with board members from across the country, there was a shared understanding. Individuals who serve in public education realize that as much as it's about leadership, it's about communication. And when a school district is facing a crisis, whether it's financial or social, how a school district and a board communicates to the public can define whether the community feels informed or ignored. This session also served a powerful reminder that professional development is not a luxury for board members, it's a necessity. The opportunity to engage with peers from districts from both similar and vastly different parts of the country gave me a new perspective and shared practical tools that can be applied right here in Plainfield. During this session on communicating through crisis and controversy, it became clear that effective communication isn't simply about responding to a situation, it's about being prepared before a crisis arrives. Many districts share how they had to develop clear, ready-to-implement crisis communication plans that outlined who speaks, how messaging is delivered, how quick the public is informed, and how misinformation can be rebuked immediately. This kind of planning creates confidence and shows the community that leadership is organized and responsive. During the session, the importance of unified messaging was emphasized again and again. Board members spoke about how alignment in public statements, whether in public and on social media, does not mean eliminating disagreement, but it perfects, it protects the public from confusion. When messages are inconsistent, the community does not know who or what to believe. But when it's unified, it builds trust, even when boards have to make difficult decisions. During this session, many board members shared how their communication departments are not support roles, but key players in stabilizing trust. These teams help translate this complex data into clear visuals, infographs, and talking points that are digestibles for families who speak multiple language and local media. A lot of school districts use shorts like YouTube and TikTok to share information quickly, clearly, and in real time. Having these tools in place in a way that's not reactive doesn't just ease tension, but it opens the door for deeper understanding. All in all, the consistent message was this: All communication should lead back to the students. Because if they can't understand what we're doing and talking about at these meetings, what good is that? So that was the common ground. So whether we're discussing finances, policies, or facilities, if the message is anchored and was best for the students, the community is more willing to lean in, ask questions, trust, stay engaged, even when the news is hard to hear. Being in that room reminded me that we are not alone in the challenges that we face. Across the country, districts are navigating budget gaps, community tension, misinformation, cell phone bans, book bans, and the list goes on. And as board members, it is tough. But what makes successful boards apart is how they prepare, how they communicate, and how they stay focused on the children through it all. This experience also deepened my appreciation for a professional developer as a school board member, because our roles are complex, but how we work with our school district and our community in keeping communication honest and clear makes a big difference. The insights shared during this session were not abstract, they were real, tested, and working in communities all across the country, and they are actionable items here in Plainfield. So together, we can build crisis communication plans, leverage our communication departments to simplify and clarify complex decisions, invite feedback through structured, respectful, and community engagement, and all in all, keep students at the heart of every message that we send. This session didn't just offer advice, it offered a vision that's possible when we communicate clearly and with unity as a board and as a district, so we could grow stronger through crisis, not in spite of it, but because of how we choose to show up and speak for our students, staff, families, and community of Plainfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Have any other commissioners that were at the conference that want to share?
Yeah, so I just want to kind of reiterate what Ms. Smith said. Conferences have become an opportunity for us to learn greatly. And I know sometimes the public doesn't necessarily understand that travel. But I think it's important to kind of highlight the fact that though we are required to take a lot of education here through the state of New Jersey, I probably learn a lot more when I have opportunities to visit other school districts, as we had the chance in Atlanta, to talk with other school board commissioners. You know, one of the quick questions I always ask people, like, what are the challenges that you're faced with and how you're meeting them? And over the course of time, we've used that travel to bring back innovative solutions for our own district, one of those things being our universal lunch that we do at the high school. And just seeing how, again, other districts are meeting the challenges and adapting to see that they fit those things. Another thing I thought was really interesting, you know, Plainfield is in the news, we could be in the news for quite a number of things. I've been on the board for quite a while, but what I was really proud or happy to hear about was when I was there, that people nationally are talking about Plainfield. And one of the things I heard them talk about extensively was what we're doing for teachers. The idea that we have raised and come to a reasonable level, something that's respectable. And I've heard from board commissioners in Massachusetts to New York to California, who are all kind of saying the same thing, like, how did you guys do that? And so while I often kind of go and ask questions about what people are doing in their districts, what was rewarding was to hear people asking about what we're doing in our districts. And I think a good part of that is because when we do go on these conferences, both home and locally, we tend to present. And so we have subtly shifted the light by which I believe Plainfield is being looked at, not just locally, but at a national level as well. And so again, it's a great opportunity, again, to continue to learn from board members across the country and to put on, to show up, to say that we're worthy of being seen as well. So that was a very rewarding feeling to hear that.
Any other commissioners?
You know what, can I just say one more quick thing?
Go ahead.
Because I did, I had a chance to attend one of the keynotes. I thought it was really, really good, was how technology and AI are impacting the future of education. I would humbly say too, it's one of those things I believe Plainfield is in front of. One of the things I did speak about was our Apple Vision program, to which, again, across the country, people are like, well, that makes sense. You know, in some communities, people have access to these things as toys. It's important in communities of our own, where we know and recognize that this is future technology that we're providing an opportunity to students as well. But something that one of the presenters said that really drove home with me was the idea that students need a complete education, that it's not driven by politics or profits, or even test scores for that matter, rather inspires curiosity, nurtures talent, provokes critical thinking, and fosters communication. And when we look at that video, you see interested faces, kids who want to learn more, who are being exposed and exploring things outside what is typically the normal inside our communities. And so as we continue to build upon those four pillars of life, flow, and learning, again, I want to commend the district and the work that's being done here.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah. First of all, I want to say good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment to share a little bit about my experience at the NSBA Conference. I had the chance to attend some powerful sessions, connect with board members and educational leaders from across the country, and taking a lot of information that really helped me grow in this role. One of the sessions that stood out was focused on how school boards can help create safe and supportive environments for all students. It was a reminder of the responsibility we have to lead with empathy and make sure every student feels seen and valued. Another session highlighted the importance of strong collaboration between board members, superintendents, and leadership teams. They really reinforced how effective communication and unity can make, can move a district forward. I also had, also had some great follow-up conversations with fellow attendees who took part in the site visits. Special thanks to Dr. Evans, our Director of Career and Technical Education, for sharing some key takeaways with me. Her insight helped me understand the career and technical education landscape. Beyond the learning, it was also great to build relationships with people who are passionate about making education better, a coming back recharged with new ideas and a deeper dive, and to, a deeper drive to continue the work we're doing for our students and our community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Johnson. All right. That is all I have for my president remarks. And we can now move forward to, I believe we have some presentations, Mr. Hassan.
Yes, we can move forward with the first presentation, Madam President.
Okay. Okay.
So it's indeed an honor and a privilege to be able to recognize two of our outstanding staff. The last few years, Alpha Phi Alpha Incorporated has hosted annual Stock Market Challenge. And they've solicited the participation of school districts up in downtown New Jersey. And in the Stock Market Challenge, a group of students who set up outright crushing that Stock Market Challenge and recognized, and they also received the small prize from Alpha Phi Alpha Incorporated. This year, out of the seven students who were recognized by Alpha Phi Alpha Incorporated, two of those students are from right here in Plainfield Public Schools, two of our very own. We want to recognize those two students this season and congratulate them on their outstanding performance in the fifth annual Stock Market Challenge as a virtual portfolio manager. And those two students are Julian Grant of BOSS, So I give the opportunity to see Carlos right there. We see one of our student advisory council. We always represent the maximum true and shown up representing the student body. So as we already stated earlier, Madam President, there are so many things that we can highlight in our school district as we work on our church performance and what our schools are doing. So when you think about the investments that are being made in Plainfield Public Schools, know that this is the return that investment. This is what success looks like. To Mr. Andrew's point, this is what curiosity looks like. It looks like this, we're able to provide opportunities and access to our students. So let me scratch that curiosity. I want you to think back to where you all were in middle school, running high school. How many of you had the opportunity to go out and manage a virtual portfolio and figure out how to play the stock market? And then had that opportunity. If I did, maybe I could have a different trajectory or a different path. So thank you for representing Plainfield Public Schools, but most importantly, thank you for representing yourself. And listen, we love to see our families come out and support our students.
Excuse me, guys. Come back, young scholars, yes, yes. Part of the picture, we would greatly appreciate that.
Before we get to the next question, I just want to give our colleagues and Julian an opportunity to share a little bit about their experience with the Stock Market Challenge.
Well, since the stocks have been broken down, we've heard of the reasons. It's been a struggle. Throughout that event, we were pushed to challenge to really show what we know and show how hard we worked. And so I'd really just like to say thank you to the community.
All right.
So basically, in the Stock Market Challenge, what I did was I shorted the market. Because markets are bad. So I took that opportunity to learn about shorting. Thank you.
Listen, we need you to come back to your board meetings. That great picture we're forming here in New Jersey. I think we have some portfolio managers we might want to hire.
Great. Good evening again, everybody, and welcome to our cheerleading team for Plainfield Public Schools. All right, so welcome, ladies and coaches. We appreciate you being here. We're glad that you came and joined us this evening. We wanted to make sure that we highlighted you all for your tremendous contribution to our student athletes, our sports overall in general, but specifically this past winter season when our boys' basketball team put them on and doing your part in cheering this historic basketball team link for the boys alongside the boys and with them. We appreciate your dedication. And as Mr. Asan stated before, you guys have been at the sacrifice that you all made to ensure that you were there at these games, share those ones with their bakeries. So I hope you're doing your dinner. Did you enjoy your dinner?
Yes.
All right, good job. Go Be Red!
Go Be Red!
Okay, so now we have a proclamation to honor you all that I'm going to read. And then Mr. Asan is going to read a second one. Oh, it's the same, but a little second one. Okay, so we're going to read this proclamation, and we're going to have you all come up so that we can make sure that we honor you and celebrate you. You can bust out a cheer because I got a cheer for you. We're going to celebrate you tonight. So 2024-25 Cheerleading Team. The superintendent of schools recommends and I so moved to follow them. Whereas the fall and winter cheerleading teams of Plainfield Public Schools have exemplified excellence, spirit, and dedication throughout the 2024-25 school year, serving as proud ambassadors of the district at athletic events, community programs, and competitions. And whereas the cheerleaders have been committed to their sport through countless hours of practice, teamwork, and perseverance, all while upholding academic responsibilities and setting a positive example for their peers. And whereas their performance on the sidelines and in competition has ignited school spirit, energized crowds, and fostered a sense of unity and pride throughout the Plainfield community. And whereas their accomplishments would not have been possible without the exceptional leadership and mentorship of head coach Aaron Murphy-Grechton and assistant coach Fajia Johnson. Their steadfast dedication, passion for cheerleading, and commitment to the personal growth and success of their athletes have made a lasting impact on the team and the broader school community. Now, therefore, be it for all that the superintendent of schools and the Plainfield Board of Education do hereby recognize and extend their heartfelt congratulations and appreciation to the 2024-25 Fall and Winter Cheerleading Teams of Plainfield Public Schools. This talented and spirited group includes investment fan, while we're here, and now welcome to join us as I say your name, Jasmine Robinson. Mrs. Nicholas Casey. Gabe LeMire. Alyssa Sallow. Rachel Staley. Brianna Clark. Johnny Caden. Shallow Arlington. Ashton Morales. Michael Staley. Olivia Robinson. Kadidi Hall. Amaya Easterling. Ashley Cooper. Jasmine Person. Jayden DeGrom. Tia Egman. Brown Anderson. Leah Grant. Veronica DeBello. C.C. Gordon. Kathy DeNates. Ashlyn Mendez. And my baby, Aleah. Coaches, baby, please join your girls. And before we take a picture, I want to bring Miss Alita up. She has a special surprise that she wants to present. And I told her that she would be able to do it. Come on, Alita, come on here.
Good evening, everyone. This was, okay, so we gave Murphy her flowers because she's resigned. So now I have a special little gift for Fajia because I appreciate her. She could be anywhere, but she chose to coach. Okay, so I have a little gift. Fajia?
Come on, Fajia. I've been a cheerleader since 2008. My daughter's not here, but she was Lele's age starting. But I was Fajia's first cheerleading coach on Pop Warner, all the way up. She's always been a Go Be Red fan. Every time, she cheered. So Fajia, this is for you. Because I'm a Go Be Girls official. Can I have a little certificate? Can I just read it?
Yes.
It says, "Thank you for your unwavering support and guidance. Your dedication to the team is truly inspiring and hard work. The effort you put into making the Plainfield cheerleading squad the best it can be. Your wisdom and guidance have helped the young ladies learn important life lessons, both on the field and in the court. We know that you've made a lot of sacrifices to being a consistent coach, and you are truly appreciated for..."
What are you looking for, Sharon?
"...your commitment. Thank you for being such a positive influence on all these young ladies. You have helped them become stronger, confident individuals. You are definitely a blessing." My favorite. I have a little t-shirt. I didn't take it from my t-shirt. And a little message.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
So Coach Murphy, Fajia, you guys stand up here for that we can get you.
Thank you, my voice is not bad 100%. My style is important. Plainfield Public Schools varsity cheerleading team. In honor of a spirited season, your pride and passion lived away. Thank you for representing us with excellence and inspiring us all, ladies. Thank you again.
Y'all, we have a photo. You want to take a photo with the cheerleader?
It's in the...
Everybody, if you look this way. One, two, three.
You hit the check, you like? Man, why don't sleep right? My bag be on a flame. What's going on? I do like, I swear by the pride back that chest and triceps and I do core. I go, I go, I go, I'm soft. When I see you got your, uh, we beat the number two team in the country sneakers.
Get in the middle and look at TJ.
I said, I see you got your, we beat the number two team in the country sneakers on.
Everybody look this way. One, two, three.
We got that out there. Like I said, my, I put it to that.
So that's the only thing part of the report? Well, in the last part of the report, it's status quo.
Yeah, but that's like, we all.
Yeah, I'm saying he didn't have like general confidence.
No, not on that one. Okay. Go ahead and do it. What you want to do?
So, uh, Madam President, I'd like to put a motion on the floor. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to move, well, I'd like to move to amend tonight's agenda to add discussion regarding the preliminary budget, specifically concerning the proposed cuts presented by the superintendent, both the 4.6 million in cuts already shared and additional cuts he may be prepared to present. Discussion will support the boards a directive for revised budget scenarios reflecting 0% tax levy increase or a tax levy increase not exceeding 2%. Discussion. Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to add a discussion.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Gray as well as Commissioner Smith that the board now amend tonight's, uh, agenda as published to allow for further discussion on the preliminary budget to include the proposed cuts by the superintendent as well as any other cuts that may result in reducing, I'm paraphrasing, Mr. Webb, reducing the tax levy. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none all in favor?
Aye. All opposed have the same right. Motion carried. Okay. Commissioner Vice President Webb, you can go ahead and start the discussion.
All right, so, you know, the last couple of weeks, um, it's been, you know, we were presented with a scenario, um, at a board meeting in March, I believe, to raise our tax levy 2% that traditionally we do. But, um, you know, over the past couple of weeks, I've had some discussion with commissioners. I had some time to sit back and reflect on it myself. And I really wanted to just read, I took a different perspective where I feel like I would like to go with a 0% increase this year, and I came up with a few reasons why. The enrollment trends and funding challenges, uh, the enrollment data, uh, Plainfield Public Schools serves approximately 10,000 students. Uh, there's a funding impact that we're losing through the pilot agreements. The pilot agreements bypass the school budgets. There are a lot of things that deprive, uh, our district through just missed revenue, through, um, not taking advantage of the pilot agreements, and I think we should take a really long look. Uh, not just an audit, but potentially a forensic audit. And really look at where the money that we have missed as a community over the last more, probably more than a decade, really puts us, uh, as a district. I think if we do go with, uh, the 0% increase, it will require us as a administration and a, and a board to be more lean. And will cause for some difficult conversations, but I think what we do is we give the community a heads up. We give them notice, uh, that they are our partners in this and looking for them to, um, know that they're going to be, you know, committed to, commit to a tax increase in future, um, future years to make sure that we, uh, continue to put Plainfield Public Schools in a proper position. So I wanted to give other commissioners the opportunity to discuss that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. So I'll, um, share my thoughts on this, um, as part of the discussion. And while I'm speaking to the public and my fellow commissioners as your board president, I'm also speaking as a community member. Resides here in Plainfield, of course, and owns a home here. And, um, I just want to share that, um, we heard the outcry from the community after the information, after the, um, preliminary budget meeting and then after the articles were out and, and we see everything that's happening. We hear everything. We have community members coming up to us, talking to us, calling us. So we get the emails. The administration has gotten the emails. Um, so we hear you and we've had time to think about it and, um, you know, we share with each other what the community members are saying and we take that into consideration. But, um, we asked the superintendent and administration to present a 0% tax levy increase, which wasn't presented initially. That wasn't one of the options, but we asked them to come up with a scenario to present a 0% tax levy increase so that we can understand where we are and what that means for the district. Um, it's not easy and, um, presenting that doesn't mean that we have extra money to spare, but we wanted to make that an option because we heard you. Um, we understand the economic challenges that we are all facing from the rising cost and inflation and financial pressures, pressures that are affecting you, but they're also affecting the board, forcing the board and the administration to, um, elevate every dollar and set in our district. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that, um, with this conversation, we shared that while this 0% tax levy increase was presented to the board, that you understood what that meant. Uh, we can assume that you have savings tucked away to absorb increase in costs and we will not and never intend to ignore the burden that any tax increase and, um, could place on the already stretched families that play in our community. And with that said, this option has not come without strain. So I wanted you to know that opting to hold the line on taxes means we must rely heavily on our district savings, which are essentially our reserve account. Um, those are intended for emergencies and long-term planning. It also means that cuts will be inevitable. We are committed to holding our administration accountable to make this work with less. However, we cannot do that without compromising the quality of the education our students deserve. However, I want to be clear that, um, in entertaining this 0% tax levy increase, and if the board chooses to move in that direction, it does not close the door on future conversations around a potential tax levy increase. The reality is that the district has not increased taxes over, in the past six years. So I want you guys to just remember that. We will continue to explore all options with transparency and responsibility, especially if new challenges arise or if we risk compromising student services. We also want to highlight that, um, something that often goes unnoticed, like, um, we've been compared to neighboring districts. Um, we have community members that do it all the time and Plainfield Public Schools, um, are not those neighboring districts. We are who we are. We are our own. We are Plainfield. And so, um, the options that were presented, us asking the administration to present this 0% tax increase and us considering this does not mean that our leadership has not done their due diligence in ensuring that we've had a balanced budget over the past few years. So we want to make sure that our superintendent, our chief financial officer, and the rest of the administration understand that this is something that the board actually commends and appreciates. We want to make sure that we recognize that there is uncertainty ahead and that we're hopeful that through continued diligence, creativity, and community partnership, we can weather this storm together without placing unnecessary burdens on our family. We will continue to listen, to lead, and to fight for what's best for our students and our city because we are all in this together. But I share those sentiments to say that, um, we're considering the 0% tax levy increase. We understand you don't want a tax increase. That's great. I don't think there will ever be a time that any member of the community will ever want a tax increase. However, the reality is that there will come a time that we need it. The time that we need it actually is in fact now. And I know Mr. Hassan has shared that we aren't in fact in a budget crisis. And yes, we do have funding in our reserve account that we can utilize. And that's all we essentially were asking, uh, Mr. Hassan and his administration to consider is for us to just utilize a portion of those funds. Um, utilizing a portion of those funds, though, actually does deplete our reserve to some extent. And I'm actually a little frustrated. I use that word because I asked Mr. Hassan that when he used that word, it can actually, um, paint the picture that we're depleting our reserve account completely. That is not the case and would not be the case, although it does place a strain. And utilizing that reserve account would drop us just below the ideal reserve level that we're essentially supposed to be within, which is about 8%, you know, a little over 8%. So, um, is it a little concerning and is it uncertain? Absolutely. But I feel like when we go into each budget season, we go in with the level of uncertainty that we don't know what type of aid we're going to get from a state level or a federal level. So I just want to make sure that you all know that, yes, we're entertaining this 0% tax levy increase. At our last meeting, Mr. Hassan did present at the request of the board, um, an option that, uh, included cuts of roughly about 4.6 million. And then, um, in having conversations with him after that, we discussed using the reserve account to offset the rest of the costs that were needed to ensure that we were able to propose a 0% tax levy increase. So, um, that's really all I have to say on it. I just kind of wanted to clarify that, um, we hear you and we're listening and we ask for this option to be presented and we're going to consider it this evening. But, um, I also wanted to make sure that the public and our fellow board members understood the realities of us having this 0% as an option. Um, we empathize with the community, um, and I believe that we will do what we feel is the best option for us moving forward. Um, and, and to my understanding, um, none of the options were even a best option, but I want to just make sure that you all understand, um, the difference between the two options. The 2% is still an increase. 0% is no increase. But we're glad that the conversation is being had and we will have to continue the conversation. But I feel like moving forward, we have an opportunity to communicate a little more effectively, be a little more transparent in this budget process so that the community understands. Because when they got the information, very misleading, of course, but when they got the information, I think that there was a sense of just not understanding and thinking that, um, it was more than what it actually is, but the reality is that it still is a tax increase. And we know that, um, with the economic, uh, crisis that we're dealing with in the nation, it trickles down to the state. It trickles down to our local municipality and we want to make sure that, um, we're empathetic to your financial needs and the burden that this tax increase may place on our community members. The community members who elected us to serve and be a voice for you. So we're trying to do just that, be a voice for the people who elected us to serve. Any other commissioners?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So one of the things, I appreciate, uh, the conversation on it, but I'm going to tell you, I'm adamantly opposed to 0%. Um, for a number of reasons, and I'll enumerate the ways, and also believe that the 2% with the 9 million you were looking for is probably the right mix. You know, as I would be saying on the board, we haven't raised the taxes in about six years. And I've said here in previous times, as you just said, it was probably a good idea to do so. But when we were doing that back then, we were just kicking the ball down the road. And to do it again now would be the same thing, the effect of kicking the ball down the road, to expect somebody future down the road to take an even larger chunk because ultimately this accumulates over the course of time. You, you're right, we're not in a, in a budget strait. We, we, uh, we have an opportunity now to put our foot on the gas and continue to move forward the things that we believe in, to continue to provide the opportunities that we spoke on. And so I know, I've been out in the community and spoken a lot as well, and I, and I saw the brother walking, nothing against it, but the 36% was almost clickbait. It had a lot of people clicking in, but when you look in and do the, and pay closely attention to the amount they were asking for, we're asking for what's a reasonable amount. You know, when you look at our community compared to others, and you're right, we're not comparing it, we're paying about 26 cents. 26 cents out of every dollar is winding up inside the school district. And I say that's significant because when you look at other school districts, they're contributing more. And one of my biggest concerns, as I've seen happen in other districts, in fact, the one I've worked in, is that when the state makes the decision to change and adjust those numbers, you could be left out on the, on the limb. I think we have a responsibility, um, as board members, who were elected to be here, who spend a lot of time in meetings, a lot of time in conversation, and have a deeper understanding of things that sometimes our public doesn't necessarily know about, or they're not necessarily following along through that entire conversation. I would challenge the idea that we haven't been transparent. We've done audits and we've done that in front of the board. We've done that for the public. We've talked about our demographic study, and so the public knows that there are some issues that we could be looking at in the future regarding, I mean, the, the general school space. I'm a taxpayer in this community too, but I believe that what we're doing is the right direction. And for $71 a month, which is what we're looking at, increasing the taxes to a little more than, three to four dollars a day, I think we're making the right investment when it comes to children. We're talking about a future and we cannot mortgage the future of children, uh, because, and I don't want to say, but because we're afraid to make the difficult decisions. A 0% increase, again, after so many, so many years of not doing this, I, I know I've had conversations, but I've also spoken outside of the general circle. Our local fair share is about $65 million. That's what we should be paying. We're closer to what, 26?
26.
This brings us to 35? That number of that local fair share is going to grow every single year. And every single year that we choose not to do what's right for the future, not for what's right now, kids would be impacted by that. And so again, I'm adamely against the 0%. I don't see how that could be, um, beneficial to us in any sense. And I think, again, the 2% with the 9 million is the appropriate right mix. Uh, because again, it allows us to continue to move forward, continue to fund the priorities, continue to provide the opportunities without taking away from the ground that we've already made right now. And I think that's important. You know, one of the things I will tell you that I've come to understand as an educator is that when you've got the momentum, you got to ride the wave. And as a district, I believe not only have we pivoted a corner, but we are riding a wave. And the last thing I think would be, uh, beneficial to us is to turn away from that. Again, I, I recognize that the people who show up and send us emails are the ones who have the energy to do so. But as I've ventured out into community, as I've walked into different places, when I have seen people who I recognize, the first thing I ask them is how they feel about it. And just about everybody I've spoken to, people who don't necessarily write in, people who are not necessarily going to make calls are telling me, now that's fair. The, the price of eggs went up in this year. The price of goods and services have gone up over the last six years. Why wouldn't our contribution to our community, if we're saying that this is what matters to us and education system matters to us, why wouldn't we be willing to make the same commitment to it? And so again, that's my, my, um, spiel for it, and I certainly hope, uh, other people see it in the same fashion.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I think, I don't, I'm not one to debate, but I just want to bring some light to a few things that you said. Um, just to highlight that I believe that some of the stuff that you said are generally some of the concerns of the community members. Like the price, uh, of living has gone up, the prices of eggs and all of that has gone up. And I think that when you look at percentages, you can look at it from two perspectives. There are members of the community who pay taxes where my taxes are different than yours. So a percentage of mine is a higher rate than a percentage of yours. So you can't look at it from a sense of we're all going to pay the same rate because that's not the same case for everybody. So I just kind of want to make sure that we still just understand that part of it and make sure that we empathize with the fact that because those prices and stuff have gone up, then that's why there's a concern because I have to pay all of this over here and no, we haven't done it in six years. And I hear what you're saying about kicking the can down the road, but we go into each year, like I said, uncertain and the district has survived each year. So, and, and I, and Mr. Hassan has stated why we ended up with a surplus, but we had that surplus, we utilized it appropriately. And I think that we need to, um, make sure we're a little bit more intentional and a little more proactive than reactive when we go into this next, next budget cycle. But I just want to make sure that board members and community members are keeping in mind that, or that we're keeping in mind that some of those concerns aren't simply that there's not a, a want or, um, or an agreement with what's needed for our students. I think that everybody can agree what our students need and how this could be beneficial to them. But I think that when they're thinking about how they're going to survive, how they're going to survive going into the next year. Not a next budget year because when you think about it, our reserves are essentially like a savings account for the district, for emergencies, for capital improvement projects, for upgrades and stuff like that. So no, it's not something that we can tap into back and forth. But the residents that we serve, essentially the students and the families that we serve, they may or may not have that. So when they're looking at an increase, even if it's $71 or $3 a day, whatever the case may be, you're looking at somebody who may or may not even have that. They could use that $3 a day or $71. So again, I'm not saying it to be combative or to go back and forth. I just want us to have a full scope of things. And I think this is why we're having this conversation now and why we're considering an alternate option outside of the 2% because it's, the 2% is still a tax increase. And I think when you look at a 0% tax levy increase where we're not doing it as we have not done over the past six years, again, that can be twofold. We haven't done it. So it's like, oh, well, maybe it's about time, but we haven't done it and we've been able to sustain and every year we go into it with uncertain. it and we've been able to sustain, and every year we go into it with uncertainty and we've gone through economic depressions and stuff, recessions and stuff like that. So, I think we just need to have a full scope of all of that.
So, you don't mind, I just saw now, address, I agree with you. So, we haven't raised it in six years, but in the course of six years, the price of things have gone up. And so, when you're, and again, if we just isolate, let's just take out, 'cause what I don't think is a good idea is for us to become dependent on state aid, on how states, how the state funds us, because those numbers change and depending on who's governor next year, there might be even further change with that, right? But if you're saying that the number has been the same, we sought the same amount from the community for the last six years, prices have risen in that time in six years. And so, even the services, goods, things that we're buying as a district and bulk or hold have gone up with that as well. And again, to your point, had we been taking the 2% over the course of the road, we would not be having this conversation at all. And I'm gonna, again, in full disclosure, I was on the board and remember some of those conversations, I remember when we were there, and it was always what I feel is a political concern about it, right, about how this is going to be seen. But 2% back then would have been nothing. It would have been, not to say nothing, but it would have been small pieces. We've waited six years and so now that 2%, that difference that we have to make up is now a lot larger than what it was. By doing the same thing, by kicking it down the road, all we're doing is extending out, somebody down the road is gonna have to pay the piper. Somebody down the road is gonna have to say, hey, we need these funds, we gotta make up the difference that boards of education prior to us decided, like, they didn't have the political stomach for it. I'm not saying that we don't. And so, what, to your point, what I, my concern is about falling into the trap of, again, doing what is just, again, sounds easy. And not to take away, I, again, fully appreciate, to your point, my tax bill is not a $71 increase. I anticipate and expect more, but I believe in what we're doing. I think that what we're, what we are moving forward with, as far as making sure that our students have those access, are worth more than what we're even willing to give, but I think the average amount, which I continue to use, although some of us will pay more, I think is a reasonable ask. We, the first scenario that we looked at required, and forgive me if I'm wrong, was more like a $1,500, $1,500 for the end of the year. This one's more in the 800 range. Because the first one was closer to almost $100 plus a month. I think that's a lot to do at once, and to your point, that would have hit people a little bit heavier than others. But again, I don't see how we are being responsible, how we're making the hard decisions by simply saying, hey, we'll just kick it down the road, we'll consider it another two years, another year out, when that's what we've been doing. And consequently find ourselves in this particular predicament now to do so. When the market was up, we didn't go and say, let's go for the 2%. When the market was down, we, the excuse was because it was down, we shouldn't have taken the 2%, but that didn't stop the increase of markets or supplies in that course of that time. It's not easy. The decision that we make, I'm sure we're gonna get slapped for it, people are gonna say things to us. But what I've, again, in my general conversation with a lot of people in the public, the response has been, it's the right move. Can't, you can't expect to get by forever with not paying. And again, and this is my humble belief, again, as an educator myself, if what you believe in, you put money in. You tell me what, you wanna show me what's important, show me where you're spending your money. And if we believe this is important as a community, as I do, then we spend our money here. It's not easy. It's gonna be a challenge for all of us across the board. But if we believe in this, if we think educating our youth is the most important thing we could do, you put your money up. Otherwise, it's not.
Can I step in, please?
Absolutely.
Person, I just feel that we don't have the same business administration team that we have six years. We don't have the same grant writers, we don't have, it's different. And because we approved the recommendation of who Superintendent Hassan put in place to check those boxes, we need to have confidence and we need to have trust that these departments are fulfilling their duties of making sure it doesn't get that bad. And I think we need to keep that in mind. We just passed the RFP for a grant writer, right? So, although we're not supposed to rely on state aid, let that, let that person do what we supported the recommendation of bringing them online to do. I think we have to keep that in mind too. We have different people in these seats that are experts in this. Let them be the experts.
And I agree, because the superintendent's recommendation was to go with scenario two with the 9 million. That was the expert's opinion.
I agree, I understand that, but there were also other scenarios for us to entertain and now we're having the conversation. I think at that point, we just wanted to go with what made sense in that moment, and then once it settled, it was like, let's dig deeper, let's dig deeper, let's ask more questions, let's look, who else is, who else can bring money to the table, what else is there? So, I agree, and we agree with Mr. Hassan's recommendations a lot, but just because we agree doesn't mean that we can't go back and say, let's, let's dig a little deeper, especially if we have the time to do it.
And again, so I think too, what sometimes I think is lost in the conversation is that it's not just about the money that I keep mentioning here, it's also about, again, how we are keeping up with the times, paying our fair share, right? And that, that is not gonna be settled by grants.
I agree, I understand that.
You know, that, the irregular money that we should obtain is not gonna settle what our fair share should be from year to year. The only way that that's gonna happen is if we, as a board, decide that we're going to put up the money that we believe. Again, we're far off from that number of 65 million, right? So, it's us as a board saying, yeah, from our local contributions, we need to collect more now. I definitely understand, again, I also think that it's also worth going to the city council. Again, if we have that, if we're so moved by this amount, I think it's worth going to the council, to the mayor's office and saying, hey, can you find that money in your budget? Like, you know what improves property values, improves values in your schooling? How well the education system is doing? How well people wanna?
Superintendent did present to the board via email, and we can definitely, I definitely plan to put a motion on the floor for us to walk it on, for us to move it forward as a recommendation, but for us to have an MOU with the city to get our fair share. Now, he did it, he could explain it better, but he did it based on a small equation based on a tax rate. But I think there's also an opportunity for us to have our auditors dig deeper into the impact that these pilots are having on our district, because that's another pool of money that we can pull from. He did it based off of a smaller portion. If we dive deeper into all of the pilots over the course of the past year or the past few years, then we'll find that there's a larger pool of funding that can help the district. We just have to have a true partnership with the municipality to make sure that that happens. And then, we wouldn't find ourselves in a situation where we have to rely on state funding or federal funding or anything like that. But the reality is, have we been relying on it to an extent, but have we been maintaining and surviving? Yes, we have. So, no, we haven't done it in six years, but that brings me back to my point of, so we haven't done it in six years, do we think that it's gonna just tank our budget and tank our district if we don't do it this year? And if we find ways between now and then to ensure that we're putting the right practices in place, that we're trying to secure funding and that we get what we need, get our fair share of the funding that we should have been at our fair share of? So, I think that's, like, when I'm thinking about the partnership that you just mentioned, then yeah, we let him send that MOU because he's been having a conversation, him and his administration, with the city administration surrounding the pilots, but that we use who we have, our vendors that we have, to dive deeper and to figure out how we can recoup our fair share from the larger pool of funding that, yes, should go into Plainfield Public Schools, because these are our community schools, these are the students and families we serve, and then we don't have to worry about that burden. Okay, there's a, there's no tax increase this year, that's what's going on in the city right now, but that doesn't take away from the fact that our community members are still in a, have, that they still do have a financial burden. And so, now if we add to that burden by increasing taxes, and I'm not saying one way or another is the best thing for the district, what I'm saying is, having any type of increase would add to that. And if we have, if we're in a position to utilize funding from a reserve account, that I know the administration does not want to deplete completely, but if we have an opportunity to use a lot, utilize it, then why are we not tapping into that to use and finding ways throughout the course of the year to replenish that? It's all gonna still be uncertain, but we have to, it's like Commissioner Shante, Commissioner Smith said, we have to rely on the expertise of our superintendent, our CFO, to get creative and figure out how they're gonna make that happen. How can they continue to do what we need for our students with less? Because, again, not comparing us to other districts, but we've been surviving. We're not in the same place that other districts are in, where they do have to do these super major cuts and lay off all of these people. We're not there. And I'm not saying that in thinking about the uncertainty, that one of the uncertainties are that we may end up getting there. But again, we have to focus on the budget year that's right in front of us and then figure out how do we maintain that and consistently continue to have a balanced budget. I know Mr. Hassan wanted to speak to some of the points that we were making, so he could speak, and then I wanna just allow other commissioners to speak once he's done.
Thank you. So, I wanted to start, I wanna make sure, I'm gonna start by saying we're clearly, in this conversation, it seems that there isn't alignment, and I wanna make sure that a couple of things are clear. I made two proposals to the board, one of those, or three proposals, that were presented in the presentation. One was preliminarily approved, that allowed us to move forward in the next phase of the process. I was then asked to come back to make an alternative scenario in which I presented $4.6 million in additional reductions. I wanna clarify that that was not saying that we would get rid of the need, right, to make those expenditures, but that we were simply deferring those to future, future years. I did not come back and make a presentation with a 0% increase, because that is not what I've recommended at the superintendent of schools, and I've made those concerns known to the board and to the community as to why I do not believe that that is in the best interest of our organization. I also presented the board with a memo that showed the impact of what a 0% or either a 2% tax levy increase would mean for us. And I think it's important for us to really talk through what the actual impact is. So, over the last few years, and I'll go back to the 23-24 school year, when building that budget, the district utilized $14.4 million from unassigned fund balance. So, that is a fund, if it's excess surplus over a certain percentage of the budget, that has to be used in a future year. So, we built the budget with basically $14.4 million of reserve withdrawals. That meant that going into the 24-25 school year, if all things remain constant, we didn't get any additional aid, we have to find, we had to find another $14.4 million going into the next budget cycle. Move forward to 24-25, we've used $4.7 million in unassigned fund balance, that was 21.8% of that current reserve account. We've also utilized 14 and a half million in capital reserves, that is 66% of that particular reserve account, and 2 and a half million dollars from our maintenance reserve account, which is roughly 11.49% of that reserve account. The capital reserve withdrawal of 14.5 million, that is directly aligned to one of the major initiatives in the five-year strategic plan, which is to acquire new space for the administrative office, to have us move out of 1200 Myrtle Avenue so that could be repurposed for a school. So, at this point, as indicated in this memo, a 0% tax levy increase, it results in reduced revenues of roughly 9 and a half million dollars for the 25-26 preliminary budget. My concern with utilizing capital reserve, maintenance reserves, unassigned fund balance to this extent, is that we don't have a firm strategy to replenish those accounts. Now, prior years, we were easily able to build up our reserve accounts, because there was so much money in the education space. School districts had so much money, they didn't know what to do with it. So, when we received ESSR funding, et cetera, let's say in our capital, capital, capital outlay, we appropriated $1 million for boiler replacements or, and to get new rooftop units. When we received the grant funding for ESSR, we were now able to utilize that funding to now cover the cost of that. So, that meant when we used the grant money, we had a million dollars that now freed up, that was now free in the general operating budget. Now, we could have used it and spent it on something else, but no, we allowed ourselves to hold on to that and build up our reserve accounts. That source of funding is no longer here for us. It is gone completely. We also know that we are, we are facing roughly a 30% increase in what we could expect to receive in our title fund. Our title grants are utilized to support additional programming that we offer, right? We use it to supplement, not necessarily, not for us to supplant. So, that allows us to operate and run our after-school programs, our Saturday academies, it covers the stipends that go along with that. So, if there's a further reduction, anything that we lose on the side of the grants, we now have to pick that up in the general operating budget. Now, although there has been an approval to, through the RFP process, to hire a firm to procure grants for our organization, there has to be grant opportunities available for them to go after. This is a ripple effect. When you see the market in the condition that it's in now, corporations, they start to tighten up their belt straps. And what does that mean for them? There are less grant opportunities out on the streets from companies and corporations that may usually provide them. So, I'm outlining this, so one, we are all aware of what the impacts are of the decision that's being discussed right now. We can go out here and we can build a budget with a whole bunch of what-ifs, but if those what-ifs don't come into fruition, the bottom will fall out. This will have long-term ramifications for us if a decision is not made that allows us to make the investment in our students and in our school district, that will put us in a position where we can continue to provide the level of excellence that we've been striving to provide for our students. Now, I don't believe that we have everything right here in our school district at this point in time, but I think we're getting very close. And as a superintendent of schools, to not have any form of additional revenue coming in, it really ties my hands behind my back and it will make things very challenging for us. If the decision is made, as I stated before, we'll get through it, but there's no scenario in which I see that happening without us having to go out and reduce some, reducing some of the services that are being provided, and maybe even letting go some of the staff members. Doing that strategically, not through a riff necessarily, but through our ability to not backfill positions, right? If an employee is non-renewed, as an example, if that's a non-essential role, meaning that they don't have a direct impact over student educational outcomes. But again, it's a difficult decision that has to be made. I hope it's one that we can arrive at this evening, that allows us to move forward and keep our students in mind. And I think there was one last point that I wanted to make on this, the pilots. Great conversation, I'm happy that we are moving forward and in that direction. Wanna be able to present an option, hopefully have some meaningful dialogue with the city's administration. I wanna clarify that I've had a few conversations, one in which Mrs. Wyatt was present for, and the second was a conversation that was most recent, trying to understand what's taking place and whether or not there are other options available, and whether or not school districts throughout the state of New Jersey have been able to make any headway in this area. I believe in our ability to collaborate and to hopefully put our best foot forward to get a deal done that supports us, but I also wanna remind us of what was said at a prior meeting when the conversations did take place about pilots. It was said in that public, that public meeting, I think it was held at the high school, when this, what the school district needs, the school district should ask for it and it should be listed on the A4F form, and it should be submitted so that the school district could in fact get the resources that it needs. I don't want us to be blinded by that and think that any conversations about a direct payment for a pilot would be in lieu of that, because there still has to be an agreement with the other party. And that right there, that is not, that is not guaranteed, but I hope that there's some meaningful conversation and we'll be able to, to get a deal done. So, that's all that I have, and I know the board wants to continue on with its dialogue on this particular matter.
I just had a quick question about it. I'm sorry, could I just ask Mr. Hassan a good question? You said the pilots and those agreements, but just, forgive me, even if we were to... even if we were to, the city would agree to us and give us a portion of it, that would still not cover the portion or the amount that the district is seeking to improve upon, right?
No. So our strategy really has been to try to close this gap for adequacy. And I've, know I've had some conversations with the board leadership about this. Every school district has a report of the district status. It will show whether the district is above, at, or below the expected local levy. And it factors in the district, what should be the district's adequacy budget? So for our district, our adequacy budget should be three hundred and twenty million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And that doesn't take into account us, like grabbing money from a reserve account, if you will, right? That's literally general operating budget that's driven by our local tax levy and other sources that may come from the state. The state contributes, uh, in equalization aid, two hundred and fifty-six million, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And with the proposed scenario that was presented, that was already approved by the board, that would bump our general tax levy up to thirty-five point five million. It's currently twenty-six, twenty-six and a half million at this point. But that leaves a deficiency of twenty-nine point eight million dollars, which ultimately means that even at that spending level, we're still twenty-nine point eight million dollars short of what we should be spending to run a thriving educational system that will provide a thorough and efficient education for all students. There is no way that we arrive at closing that gap in one fell swoop. So it has to be something that, that occurs progressively. We've had the conversations about, about pilots on a number of occasions and I really do think that it's a, it's a difficult conversation for all parties. I don't think that I've ever come across a, uh, a mayor of a township who says that it doesn't provide an advantage for the community, right? I think the laws are written in such a way that it provides a great incentive, right? And it gives you a tool to use. But the law wasn't necessarily written to support school districts benefiting from that. And if you look around the state of New Jersey, there's many communities that are having the same conversation. Montclair was one of them. I believe Clark and Cranford had a similar conversation about it. But none of them have been able to come to that happy medium or create a model that other school districts have been able to follow. I hope that through collaborative conversations, we could really crack that here. But for any pilot that is, uh, on the books, whatever the estimated value of that property is, it doesn't get, it does not get factored into the estimated valuation of all of the properties in the city. That number is multiplied by the district's tax rate portion. That gives us our local tax levy. So that means, again, if you have a pilot that's twenty years, whatever the value is of that property, it won't get factored into that total number until you get to year twenty-one. I'm not sure if we're, we're gonna be in these roles that we're in and nobody's looking to wait twenty-one years because it does have an immediate impact on us. So that's one aspect. I know we've talked about opportunities to bring in an additional revenue, et cetera. I mean, we're doing everything that we can. Uh, we've partnered with other school districts, some charter schools in the city to provide transportation services as a vendor to them, which brings in additional revenue to us. But it doesn't bring us millions of dollars, right? And the reason those, those types of shared service agreements don't bring us millions of dollars is because the staff members that we've hired, their primarily, their primary responsibility is to provide the services and supports to our students, right? Which we pay a salary for. So again, we're doing everything that we can on our end and I'll answer any other questions that, that commissioners have about where we are.
Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, sir, I just, um, I wanted to opportunity to remember this, myself. I was the only commissioner that nobody knew on the original, um, tax increases. And I just want to take the opportunity to explain my role in that one. So I assume my role is to lead the public schools. And I do that because I believe in work at all times. Um, the reason why I wanted to help with the tax increases wasn't because I don't think that the district, you know, sort of needs it. Um, I understand sort of the political condition there, which is that, like, it's a prisoner's dilemma, right? We're being helped by the federal government. And all of us, and municipal government and also local government, municipal and also school government, we need to work together or to figure out what the best solution is for all of us, right? Um, and one of the sort of big issues that I had is that the budget didn't start. We don't start the budget in March. The budget starts in the fall. Yeah, I'm sorry, Gary? All right, thank you so much. The, the budget process begins early on. It begins in the fall. Um, you know, it's, the budget process begins with the VA in the fall. And sort of what I've been advocating for with Chair Johnson is a more participatory version of the budget because when the tax increase came out, it was just like now, the board had to figure out a way to sort of play a marching band role when it should be a marching band role from the beginning, like when the budget is created. So, um, I hope we can take the steps to a more participatory budgeting because we're gonna need it in the future to come. Um, and I also wanted to mention the more, talk a little bit more constructively about pilots as well. But there is a thirty percent owner occupied, right? So that means out of all the, the tax collection rate will ultimately come from the owner occupied ones. And I think that's what people were reacting to. Um, generally, you know, when we see the introduction of pilots because it was a huge disinvestment, right? And now it's an attempt to reinvest in, in some capacity in, into the next phase. I think it can be more equitable, right? But in order for us to really sort of, um, drive home something that works, we all have to be like reading from the same handbook, but we also have to understand, right? We need to understand how to work for the venue, right? I think one of the big problems here is that we're at the table, we don't know how to work for the venue. And we should be like, well, first, to understand what to advocate for. And I think personally, we need to advocate for more space. But we need to also advocate for, um, a mutual sort of program that allows for that homeownership rate to go up because that's where your tax collection rate will largely come from. At thirty percent, right? I think that's one of the major problems is that if you can figure, if you can figure out somebody coming together with municipal government, figure out a way that we can, um, have our needs met, right? One of the biggest needs that we have is we still have a teacher shortage. Um, teachers, um, you know, creditworthy isn't there. There's a whole lot of factors that may contribute to increasing homeownership rate. Um, I think that we have a lot of opportunities to work with municipal government, the local city government, but it can't be oriented towards this. What I see a lot is a very jazz band focus, right? It can be individuals trying to play their own sound. You know, again, we're, we're captives here, we're captives of the federal government. We all need to figure out a way to work together, but we have to consider a lot of that.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah.
Go.
Um, so, real quick, you know, I think our roles as commissioners is just, you know, very interesting and it, it brings a heavy weight, you know? Um, like when we had our young scholars in and we were having a conversation and giving out awards, you know, the energy was great, you know, and I felt that, you know, like on a high, right? And then we made our motion and the energy in the room shifted, you know? That's something that I just do not want to see in our finances, right? So for me, I mean, I think that any kind of cushion we can give our kids to make sure that we are always gonna give them the programs that we believe they need is something that I think, I, I think I want to do. So I am for the, uh, two percent increase.
Any other?
So I, I think here's the thing. I think we're all for, to some extent, whatever increase is gonna work best for our students. But going back to what I shared, what I learned that the session, and no disrespect to any communication or media here, but if that two percent is still headlined as something different, then we still have a problem. So there still needs to be a clear communication. If we all agree that we do need that two percent cushion, I just want to hold the media that's in the room accountable of highlighting that it's just that and the intention behind it. Because I think this is how this unraveled the way that it did. Because it went from we agreed to one thing, we supported Mr. Hassan's recommendation, it was great data behind it, it made sense. And I think we all woke up the next morning and saw thirty-six percent. And at this point, we're doing everything in our power to not backpedal, but to make our community feel comfortable. But the same way we need a partnership with our municipalities and our local government, we need partnership with media. So the information, as once we leave this room, we're not waking up to any surprises tomorrow and our community isn't either. Because if that's the case, it does make us want to go to zero percent because zero percent is the only thing that we don't have to go back and correct. So I just want to say, if we agree on two percent, please put it in a minute that it's just that. Because the headlines are misleading and that's what made this conversation be a very healthy conversation and we needed to have it. But it, it's hurtful when we do things for the students out of good intent and then it's not translated like that. And then we have to go back and find every language possible to get our community to understand what we meant when what we meant should have been written and clear from the first time.
I just want to say one thing. I want to speak to a couple of points and then I digress. But to, Commissioner Gray made a point that, um, that I made essentially with different words, but I want to speak to the understanding that the budget process does not start in March. It, it does start at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so if we start to, if we enter each budget year, but I'm not gonna talk about each budget year because we're in this year and we're looking at next year. So if we enter the next budget cycle with that in mind and we decide that we're gonna be more proactive and we decide that we're gonna be more intentional and we decide that we're gonna communicate more effectively and be more transparent and really make sure that we understand to the magnitude of what we currently have to work with, what we can potentially have or what we could potentially not have. Because every year, those are the questions that we have to ask ourselves in general. There's uncertainty, like I said, around every budget year. We never know what type of funding we're going to get. I think though that we've heard that the two percent is a tax increase. It works. Not what we need because we'll still go into the year needing to figure out how to get more money, but it works. The zero percent is no tax increase. Not what we need, but it works. It can work. We're gonna have to make it work. So, uh, but, but at the same time, I think we can now go into a budget year with all of that in mind and do what we need to do to ensure that we're not back here next year. And respectfully, we have to rely on the superintendent and the administration to make it work, to get creative, to figure it out with what we have. Because increasing the taxes, no matter how we try to spend it or what we try to say, does place a financial burden on the community. Not increasing the taxes, not saying that that doesn't place the district in, um, a position of vulnerability when it comes to our finances, but it's a position that we've been in that we can sustain and maintain while we figure out how to drive in additional funding and while we work or attempt to work with the municipality to, um, come to a point where we're working together and now we can offset some of those. Um, we can ensure that we bring in some of that revenue and some of those, some of that funding to, um, to serve the students and the families that we're sitting here and elected to serve. So I just want to drive that point home and then I want to say, um, yes, a decision has to be made tonight. A resolution needs to go on the floor if we're amending the preliminary budget that we already approved to have sent to the county because we need to send the revision to the county. We have to ensure that we have a solid preliminary budget to approve when we get back here on August twenty-ninth. And at that point, we can still, of course, have the conversation, but we can't continue to have the conversation around two scenarios that still aren't what we need. We don't have a scenario that gives us a perfect picture. We don't have a scenario that puts us in a position where we have any type of cushion. What we do have right now is a reserve account that we have the opportunity to pull funding from, that we have the opportunity to replenish, and either scenario pulls from that reserve account. So I think that we need to be more proactive and more intentional in our approach and in our budget process from the beginning of the fiscal year to the end of the fiscal year and work to make sure that we're making cuts where we can, where necessary, where we can avoid an impact on direct student services and where we can make cuts that make sense for what we need to do moving forward without having to say we have to lay off teachers or not backfill positions. Some we may not be able to backfill. I think with either one, it's inevitable that cuts are gonna happen. It's, it's just something that we have to look to every year. It's, it's, the reality is that when you do make cuts for some of those positions, you don't always backfill all of them. It's not possible to literally backfill all of them because of some of the things that you guys said with the teacher shortage. So I just wanted to kind of speak to that. And again, I digress. Um, I want to let other commissioners speak if they want to, but then I want to entertain a motion if that's the next step before we all digress and move into executive session. I also want to make sure, um, that while we're on the topic of the budget and pilots, that we, um, that we entertain a motion for, um, resolutions revolving around the pilot as well.
Okay. Can I just be honest about our funding process, right? So another reason why I explained it in the note as well, a note in notes because I fundamentally believe that in order to get free and thorough and appropriate education, the funding needs to come from the state. The state does not owe me that. Um, but what I will say is that that light at the head of, at the, at the head of the tunnel, it's not a light, it's another string. It's a natural. That's the one that hits us, but we do not do tax increases, right? I, I believe that there's things we can do better in terms of the delivery of budget, right? Um, because the budget is the political document, right? And we need to be getting buy-in from a lot of these issuance before we can bear the tax increase. I think that's the most important thing. And that's what we do it for our committee structure. There was no tax increase that was mentioned in our committee structure, right? So it's like, we're really committed to transparency as part of the strategic plan. We're really committed to democratic participation. We're willing to do it via the governance process, which I think you agree with. I think you fundamentally agree with that as far as we do that as well. But I just think we sort of need to be more deliberate about the fact that we are not going to get the funding, the generous funding that we got from the state in previous years, right? And gravy train is on, we're not getting any of that. We have to figure out what's coming from the local level and it requires commission. And I think we can go with that.
Any other comments from any other commissioners?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, um, like to Shante's point, like that forensic audit, you know? Like I just want to make sure that we, you know, get that right as far as, you know, because you know, media outlets take things and they go, you know? So I just want to make sure that we kind of, you know, get their verbiage right for that.
No, I think it's important that we, I mean, um, Vice President Webb and I did talk with Mr. Hassan earlier a little bit about, um, an audit process where we dive into trying to figure out the impact, um, on our district and how we can try, you know, make an attempt at recouping some of those funds because just doing it for one pilot is one thing, but finding out the impact of multiple pilots over a span of years is another thing. And then to Mr. Hassan's point, yeah, right now, and, and what he's proposing us do an MOU for is tens of thousands. But that could potentially be the millions that could actually help. Um, whether it's one million, two million or more than that, at the end of the day, it is something that can help. So I think that we do entertain the option of allowing the auditors that I do believe we have, um, hired to some extent. Um, we have auditors. They've done audits. So I believe that we rely on them and use them to actually go and do that audit. I don't, obviously don't know how long it takes. I don't know the process. But I think that in a sense of being proactive, in a sense of, um, making sure that we're communicating and being transparent, that we have the and being transparent, that we have the information that we need to make well-informed, well-informed decisions and to move forward in a way where we know exactly what we need to do or we, we try to figure out how we can get the funding that we need and advocate for what we need on multiple levels. And so just because we're of the mind and of the uncertainty that we may not have it, there's always that flip side that it may still be available to us. Like I said, the uncertainty is there around either option. The uncertainty is there every budget year we go into. And I think a lot of community members, a lot of elected officials, everybody, we got this president in office that has gotten in and started making all these cuts to everything and now we're fearful that, and rightfully so, we're fearful that the funding is just going to go away. Where I'm not of the mind that it's going to go away completely, but to the point of many commissioners, then yes, we may not have that same type of funding going into next year. We may, it may be lower, it may be the same. Or rightfully, it may be more. But I just, I, I agree. I agree with you and I think that we need to make sure that, that's a resolution that we put on the table as well. So I feel like we're entertaining two resolutions at this point or...
Mostly.
Three. I, I'm not sure at this point. But the first resolution would need to, the first resolution would really need to be the two percent or the zero percent because at this point, that's what we're discussing. And then I guess the next resolution would have to be about the pilots. The situation regarding the pilots. Somebody, you have something to say?
I would, I would, so I echo the sentiment of my commissioner, my former commissioner and I don't think a zero, two percent increase is what we should entertain. But I think that the, I think what was supposed to be like the eighteen percent, thirty-six percent, I think that's where we need to be at. I think it needs to be more effective communication of what the tax increase means for everyone, right? That we're all in this together. And I think that doing the zero to two percent is engaging the board in a political discussion about, like, why the tax increase isn't important for this kind of election. But I think that like we all need to stay in our business here for everyone, for our kids. And I think that we can communicate better about the tax increase and we can do more work on our board, on our committee, right? In order to really advocate and, and get people to understand. And I'm happy to take my time and do, you know, budget hearing or, you know, do many discussions with members of the community about the budget, but I just think the process needs to be different, right? And I, and again, I want to go back to the notebook that I presented. It's because the most equitable way to fund public schools is through the state because they have more robust taxes. When you base it on property taxes, well, that does create an equitable outcome because think about seventy, when you had tax flat, right? The public education system was directly aligned. So I think that we can be clever and be a lot more deliberate about the way we do this with the requires everybody to do well, right? It requires everybody to understand how we think.
So the budget process for this year, what we're entertaining right now is already done, like we're here. So there's nothing that we can do more. We can't go out to the community right now and talk about the options. We can't have another preliminary budget hearing or do another budget presentation. We have to make a decision on how we're going to move forward because that information needs to go to the county. So I hear what you're saying. I'm, the reality though is that what you're talking about, about the budget process for this year is done. We're having this conversation so that we can make a decision to move forward because we have to.
So I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that a resolution be drafted to formally amend the preliminary budget to reflect a zero percent tax levy increase with no increase to the current tax levy.
Is there a second?
Second. Just a, a point of order. I think the appropriate way to, to do this first is the motion to rescind, to rescind the resolution of March eighteenth regarding the tentative twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget because that would have to be rescinded and then a motion put forward.
So let's do that.
That every commissioner go and take a voting room? Because that's the one here voted on the thirty-six percent increase. And honestly feels like...
Thirty-six percent?
They're not know what thirty-six percent mean. It was thirty-six percent.
I, I do, I'm going to be honest, I do believe that there was a misunderstanding around that number of thirty-six percent that you're referring to.
Thirty-six percent wasn't communicated that night.
If, if it was understood to you a certain way, all right, listen, point of order. If it was, if it was understood to you in that way, then that's fine. You voted your conscience and how you needed to vote.
I, I would like to clarify General Counsel's statement in terms of the rescission. I've already had communication with the county. I don't think it would be prudent to rescind it first. We would still need a, a revised resolution to send to the county and today indeed is the deadline because if tomorrow, whatever the county has in the homeroom budget software tomorrow is what they will base our approval on allowing us to fully publish our full budget in the paper, which is a statutory requirement, tomorrow is the deadline for us to still be able to hit a target date. So I would need a revised, more so within a rescission, I would need to revise that, that resolution so that those resolutions could be sent to the county.
So what is the correct language for the motion that needs to be put on the floor?
The, what I heard Mr. Webb say was to revise it and then everybody started talking.
Is that proper protocol to just revise one that's already been approved? I think you were asking this to me.
Well, well, again, I, I don't know the conversations that were had with the county. So this, this may require that we have to discuss because I'm not sure of the conversations that were had, but there was a resolution that was voted on that dealt with one tentative budget and now we're making a motion to potentially adopt a different one. So we have to address the prior resolution because it still is in effect. So... Because the county received the budget, the county received the budget packet based on the resolution that was provided, correct?
Correct.
So that one has to be rescinded before the... It, it would have to, ultimately that resolution would have to be rescinded if, if it is passed to modify. So I guess if you, it, right now there is a budget on file with the county and we are in compliance.
Correct.
So perhaps the better order is to do the motion initially to, to adopt or to, to revise to a zero percent. But, and if that passes, then a motion would be needed to invalidate the prior or to rescind the prior. Okay, so the motion to rescind it would come second. Well, we would still have to do it tonight. The motion to rescind would come after the motion to revise. Real, I, I, unfortunately, we would have to discuss this. I just don't have enough information to be clear on...
May I suggest a brief recess so this can be discussed?
Yes, we can recess to discuss this.
Make a motion.
And it requires, and it requires legal advice. Yes, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session so that we can discuss this matter and the legal ramifications around the budget, preliminary budget.
So moved. Second.
Who made that motion? I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Andrews?
Commissioner Webb.
No, Commissioner Andrews. Make a motion to, for the recess.
You gotta reset your first motion. It wasn't seconded. It wasn't seconded. So it died on the floor. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews, seconded by Commissioner, Vice President Webb to recess in the executive session. You heard the motion, you ready for question? There being none all in favor? All opposed have the same right. Motion carried.
So this is just regular, we got something about the other legal stuff.
Because they might as well come in there.
Who's looking for the motion?
We need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to resume public session.
Second. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Andrews at the board resuming this meeting in public. You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being an all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Motion carry.
Alright, Mr. Hassan, you had a presentation?
Yes ma'am, it's long.
Unfortunately. But go on ahead and get to it. Need the information. You could get through it real quick, you get to bring your kid to work on Thursday. You could bring both of the, both of the twins.
I can say she's at present they going to school. So, in tonight's presentation, I will be providing an update on our district's goal, and also providing an update on the district's performance to our current 23-24 school year which is recently released. We've already gone through our regulations even, and congratulations to our students during the recent call on our police for being recognized as some of the top performers in the Alpha by Alpha 23 incorporate and who stop challenges. The junior grade students were two or seven students who were recognized throughout the entire city of Jersey. Another congratulations to our varsity cheerleading team for all of their hard work and dedication supporting our student athletes representing the district during 24, 25 school years. Now I will move on with our district goal update and also function here. So our goal one, we're focused on teaching and learning. This is really aligned with our goals and our ambitions to improve our academic efficiency for our students on our NJSLA test as a state assessment. And our students are testing on subjects of ELA and math. We set a very aggressive goal to have our initial other targets of efficiency to be forty-five point eighty percent in NJSLA and forty-one point nine percent, I'm sorry, forty-five point eighty percent in ELA, forty-one point nine percent in math as projected by the testing targets. I sent the memo to the board a few weeks ago informing the board that testing targets have been modified for the state of New Jersey for all school year students. So the targets that the ELEB has set, uh, set for us are actually a lot lower than that. They went back into the recalculation in that memo. I've been informed of a request that the board allows to adopt those updated targets that have been presented and calculated by the state of New Jersey. At this point in our school year, we've con, we have successfully completed two interim assessments. And those interim assessments align to the New Jersey student learning standards for ELA and math. Our students are showing the following, uh, the following progress. These assessments test our students for their efficiency and mastery among the standards that they have been introduced to during the school year. Students are expected to master these standards by the end of the school year. During the fall assessment for ELA, we got eighteen point three percent of the students showed efficiency. That has increased to thirty-eight percent of our students showing efficiency after completing the winter assessment. For math, that number was nineteen percent, increased to twenty-three percent. You'll see on the next slide how that fares to what we did, how our student did for last year at NJSLA. Some of the next steps that we're taking as an organization after the completion of those two assessments. We move forward preparing our students for the NJSLA so students will receive intensive support. We continue to provide support through smarter construction and also open up our personalized learning plan. We always want to uplift our students and recognize them for their hard work and dedication. So as a part of that commitment, we are going to celebrate and acknowledge our students' perfect scores. Our students who have exceeded the target and also recognizing teachers who have a high percentage of students in their class. As far as our experimental learning, we've ever seen a recent press release that was, uh, that came out regarding our partnership with the Rockwell County Chartered School. In that partnership, we move forward our shared service agreement, which I mentioned earlier. That allows to utilize district buses to provide transportation for future that they want. District received payment for providing those services. Something that we've done with other organizations such as the UCA, and maybe to utilize, constitute the foundation for student transportation. Through that experience, we're able to partner and collaborate to develop an experimental, uh, experiential learning experience for students which will let take students across our middle schools. Four trips will lead them to the goal and then after that trip is a math activity. So our students are going to the goal now, they're going to focus on statistics, ratios, fractions. We created the activities, the worksheets. We're just trying to find ways to make the learning a little more fun and engaging for our students. I think it's important for us to create those experiences and provide opportunities outside of the classrooms for our students. So I share that because that was the result of partnership and collaboration. The students sharing ideas, figuring out where there are opportunities for us to learn from each other and create experiences. See here on this slide, this is a more in-depth breakdown across grade levels to show exactly where our students have performed, our performance from assessment. You can see here that we've seen movement gains across every grade span, as we released in ELA. To the far left, you, you see where our students' performance was on NJSLA assessment. That was delivered in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, uh, starting from the bottom and working our way up top. Students in grade three, seventeen percent of those students just, uh, seventeen percent of those students exceeded or met the cut score for NJSLA in twenty-twenty-four. The first assessment for grade three during this school year, we had fourteen percent of the students hit that mark. That increases to twenty-one percent for the second interim assessment, showing the gain of seven percent. We show a decline in grade four, going from twenty-three percent to thirteen percent. Five, we show an increase of four percent to twenty percent over the two assessments, grade six, twenty percent to thirty percent. Grade seven making the, the largest gain, showing a fall from five percent efficiency and mastery from the first assessment to forty-eight percent in our second assessment. Eight, students went from eighteen percent on the first assessment to thirty-three percent on that second assessment. That shows that we are making some strides internally. And I think, uh, we'll talk on a future slide about something things we did on the front end to get us more manageable and to make it make sense. I want to highlight something, if you're looking and see that the textbook says the percentage of students going sixty-five percent or better. I want to highlight that and talk about so we don't have misunderstandings of that. When back was mapping the NJSLA, students who passed or received that mean they hit the cut score of seven fifty. On average, those students are answering roughly sixty to sixty-five percent of the, of the test questions correctly. We have a consultant that's been working with our district for school year, and we were able to, to learn at our doctor mapping assessment. So this idea that, uh, getting the NJSLA assessment is something that's well beyond the reach of our students who are passing or receiving at the mark, it's not that. It really is as simple as having our students. Moving on to math, similarly here, we show our students starting from grade three and working our way up. Ten percent of our students hit that mark, number from assessment one, thirty-six percent for assessment two. Grade four, ten percent in, uh, assessment one, thirty-four percent in assessment two. For grade five, we show a five percent for assessment one, moving up to fifteen percent for assessment two. That is a grade span that we are watching, we're watching that grade span closely because even after the second interim assessment, our students in grade five are performing at the same level that they performed at last school year when they took the assessment. Respect that to be a lot higher. For our students in grade six, that number went from ten percent to twenty-seven percent over two assessment periods. And our students in grade seven saw an increase from ten percent to twenty-three percent. In grade eight, that increase went from nine to twenty-three percent. So, during the course of the school year, for us, these are, are very solid gains. Again, we're not just looking at growth, we're looking at the efficiency of our school year. As a part of the district, our district teacher plan, my mentorship, has been tasked with developing an early warning dashboard to help us identify the needs of our students. This is a snapshot of the, of the whole pie to show what we consider to be the percentage of students who are at risk of high various categories. Green shows low risk, yellow shows minimal risk, and orange color showing moderate risk, with red showing extreme risk. You see that these numbers vary across our, our grade levels. But we do see the strongest performance from our students in grade two and grade three, which is similar to what was on the previous slides for the interim one assessment. What goes into this early warning dashboard is not just the performance from our interim assessments. This calculates incidents that are reported, whether it's amount of violence, harassment, intimidation, bullying. It also includes attendance for our students, other assessments that we lay on, such as HMO and also our, our readiness group. This is just a snapshot, uh, the purpose of sharing with the community. Our team members have received appropriate training to build out this tool. And this tool will how the personalized learning plan that teachers will create for our students. Those will all be aligned to the standards that our students are expected to have. As an example, students like Sean Hassan, needing to have a personalized learning plan committed to help support his growth and development in math. That plan would include a list of the standards, the math standards that Mr. Hassan, or that student by Sean Hassan should get supported. Teachers will have access to that document. The document can be shared across, uh, multiple stakeholders. So if I'm a teacher, I have it for math, I'll have access to it. But if Mr. Johnson, as the example, is a student who's reading the math of our school, he will also have access to it to make sure that we're aligned with how we're supporting our students. We are also tasked with curriculum realigning. This is one of the items listed in the five year strategic plan. This is a screenshot that shows our curriculum map and case study guide for math nights in grade three. You'll see on, uh, far left, you will see a symbol or a letter rather that indicates the day of the week. The next column over, you will see the actual date. The next column over shows what day of the school year we will be on. And then to the right, it shows you the modules. Over here, we're talking about fractions. It also shows that in our curriculum map, students in grade three during the course of the school year, they have twenty-six instructional days that focus on fractions. It also shows the models and the units that should be addressed on those days. This information, uh, one last thing, if you go to the far right, that's when you start to see the standards out of there. This information helps bring alignment to all of us as an organization. If we were to walk into a math classroom, uh, to, to do an observation, If we were to walk into a math classroom, uh, to, to do an observation, this is a third grade, third grade math class. If I went into that classroom on March eleventh, which was day one hundred and fourteen. Our expectation, our expectation that they used to be focusing on fractions, and that there would be a model, model fours, or what we, we'll be focusing on doing for lesson twenty-four sessions. Have to also understand that there's a little gear rotating, but sometimes, uh, standards have to be reintroduced, they have to be retrained. And that might cause our teachers, not necessarily off track, or maybe they may be behind this particular schedule for these days. That would cause the team to ask questions when they go into the classroom. We've done, uh, a realignment of all of these curriculum maps, uh, throughout our entire grade span for our students. And I think teachers now have a clear understanding of the path to move forward. Moving on with our interim goals, one of our strategies was to refine our, our PLCs, make sure that they are perfected. That target for us internally is to ensure that at least eight percent of the PLCs are needed by weekly. And the focus is to reduce the data, uh, adjust the structural strategy, and also share best practices of how we perform. We leverage, uh, Monday. Monday is a, a day that we party for, uh, with PDA. Teachers, uh, stay out of school on Mondays, you know, staff meetings, et cetera. So not only are we building PLCs into the daily schedules for our teachers, we've also, uh, set aside the second and third Monday of every month. To be dedicated for PLCs, which also. I don't think you'll find a school district that has more time dedicated allocated towards PLCs. It's our job to make sure that they are actually being executed to the level that we expect them to be. We increase the number of walkthroughs that we have in our organization. Walkthroughs are conducted by principals and assistant principals, not secondary students. Very important that feedback be provided so that it's completed by teachers. And we utilize that to track performance and to help, uh, our teachers, so that they are making the necessary improvements. We already talked about our, uh, curriculum alignment review, but our ELA and social studies curriculum, they are being aligned, so I think this is. This, uh, strategy is currently in progress. We're utilizing a protocol or methodology, as you know, which is known as. Utilizing this methodology to assess the effectiveness, effectiveness of all programs that we offer. So after school programs, clubs, uh, support for intermissioned teachers, teacher assistance, you name it. Our goal is to receive a return investment of thirty percent, which is what we're. Our, for every dollar we push into that particular. Any program or initiative that doesn't meet that mark will first attempt to do a redesign. And if that redesign is unsuccessful, we will make a decision as to let it out. Home set that program. We direct those funds to our district. Probably give results for us. Moving on to goal two, uh, focuses on our graduation and secondary success. Now, uh, again, a very impressive, uh, piece of our graduation. One that we can, uh, practice as well right now, we're showing, yeah, roughly sixty, uh, seventy-six percent of our students. This is graduation. We're continuing to, uh, I think our students are getting dropped out over the last few years, et cetera. But I think we're in pretty good shape, uh, and we were seeing our target, uh, dropping seventy-seven percent last year. This is where the program really needs to roll, there's some students who need some additional support, credit recovery, et cetera, and we make those programs available. As of this slide, our new secondary plan development, this is a work in progress. This is something that we, we look to see, expect to see the needle moving as progressively better course of the school year. For our students who are developing and creating our, their post-secondary plan. Align to our four EPM. We'll ensure that as we close out the school year, we will have one hundred percent of our students, uh, completed, uh, hasn't completed. That's with post-secondary plan, that's what we're, which aligns to our four EPM. Moving on to our enrollment AP course participation, at this point in the school year, our expectation was to see. At least ten percent of our eligible students enrolled in the programs, meaning our AP courses. While we still have, uh, another market period, there are opportunities for students to take. Over courses, more courses that are being rolled out for the spring. But our AP course participation, we can expect that to remain where it is at this point because they. That nineteen percent is a huge gain in comparison to where our school years. And it puts us on pace to hopefully catch up with the state of New Jersey, which probably will, uh, above thirty percent. Moving to cultural goals, this goal has a multiple component. First is retaining ninety percent. We maintain that the student retention rate of ninety percent. And then also, uh, increasing our cultural indicators, positive cultural indicators by twenty-five percent. By reducing the number of violence and vandalism by twenty-five, after poorly to the state. One of our strategies here has been to also ensure that our new teachers are paired with a mentor and give them a, that can do a. One of the mentor process, this is also one of the active, uh, district teaching. Very excited that we, that we have provided this opportunity for our. Based on our culture and climate, we have implemented staff recognition programs, they've been implemented across the district. Here's an example of some of the recognition. Our perfect attendance is possibly, uh, something that we encourage. I want to make sure that staff do it each and every day. But the employee highlights are really positive. It is easy to, I think, hustle and bustle with anything that goes in, education and all of the main, public education. Easy to not provide that moment of recognition, but it's important that we are intentional about that. We are looking to receive recommendations from employee highlights from staff members throughout the district. But we also partner with PDA to develop a protocol for an excellence award that we will make available to our staff members. They have to be certified too, to that second. We'll be rolling down from the next one. Moving on to our retention rate, our, 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 our retention rate is ninety-two percent. However, we also know that we have a challenge to provide after tea. And we do have corrective action plans that have been created for our students. Initiative to help support us, uh, decreasing our chronic absenteeism rates. Some of the district initiatives that we rolled out, I mean, our kindness events. Every week, and also walking my shoes campaign that we rolled out. Get them to be more empathetic and compassionate to circumstances. Here's a snapshot of the district, as DS reports, year to date, as reported. Education, total is sixty-eight, and we are on track to, to meet our target of having. That we've had some, our B cases, our fourteen to be, uh. And we've also rolled out programs and initiatives to just break awareness to the impact of bullying. Community members and board members were able to attend. Uh, the play that we had playing for high school, uh, bullying is not cool. I think it was very, I think it was very impactful to see students. Playing those roles and did something that I thought was, was special for our students. We reached out to students who have impacted our bullying in the district. And we invited them and their families to be, be, uh, yes, uh, for. I think that was something that they appreciated, the fact that we acknowledge, uh, the situation, circumstances. Those students, and so time to recognize them and let them know. Moving on to our community engagement. Both years to, uh, develop and implement a comprehensive education plan. Also having that promoter score twenty percent. Uh, community members who are here, those who are listening at home. Purposeful also use Let's Talk as our official, official platform for you to submit. And access Let's Talk directly from the district website. The other report is a communication holiday that is, uh, late twenty-two, probably expected. It's up to twenty-two, five. Need to work to establish a partnership, we'll bring it up on the highlight on the next page. As it relates to, uh, increasing community feedback and survey participation. We've been able to, uh, increase our engagement on surveys by sixty percent. We rolled out the, the results of our first survey that took place in the course of school year. Uh, we also developed corrective action plans internally to address those areas of concern from staff members and students. Ultimately, I would see a negative eighty percent from our parents. And that net promoter question asked them how likely they were to recommend services or things for our students. Our initial, uh, net promoter score of fifteen, that was related to students. Points, but our customer score, CX score, as we call it, in our Let's Talk platform has increased. Five to eight point nine. Lastly, our growth and our engagement and contact. I want to thank our office of, uh, marketing and communication for their hard work and dedication. Opening out our new communication platform, and that's parent square. Parents square, uh, provides us with the opportunity to, uh, direct communication to our parents. With students, staff members. Now, ninety-seven, ninety-seven percent retreat, meaning we've been able to successfully, you know, send communications. Seven percent of our family, our school community, which I think is absolutely amazing. Send out the card of communication, the card of connection that goes to our weekly. I think that our newsletter, which highlights all the amazing initiatives we have in place in our school district. I would encourage everyone to, uh, visit the district's website, subscribe to our newsletter. Our newsletter is sent out on a weekly basis, to eighteen thousand people. We also have forty-three thousand individuals who engage with us. So when you think about the universe and our ability to reach them, whatever platform media works with them. There is some work for us to do when it comes to, uh, printing, uh, communications, such as our newsletter that we're working on now to be mailed out. But that platform allows us, uh, parents who allow us to send communications as emails. It allows us to send communication as text messages. And it allows us to communicate with individuals in the language that they need to, as they communicate to them. If I was receiving a message, I have the ability to choose which language it's translated to. Even though we may send out that communication in English, if someone wanted to, uh, receive that communication in Arabic. When they receive that message, it will be trans, uh, transferred in that particular language for them, for them. This tool helps us close the communication gap, which is really valuable when it's, which is big for our community, our community members to actually. Here are some of our, our metrics, again, our recipients in our system is a little higher, so we have twenty-two thousand. Social media recipients, uh, community members. Thousand, we have eleven thousand email users, five thousand five hundred email users who are students. Three thousand two hundred twenty-five users, two thousand and ninety-two texters. Meaning that that, that's their preferred method of communication. Also like to highlight our website metrics. We redesigned our, our district website, ended up to make it more user-friendly. And I know that there's always room for opportunity, always room for opportunity improvement. But also, I want to just take a moment to highlight, people are visiting our website, going to our website to look at information. As of today, from October, and our website runs to April, or from October to April. We had five thousand, I'm sorry, five hundred and seventy thousand views and one point seven billion interactions with the district website. So the numbers don't lie, um, when it comes to our school community and their interaction with us. Going here to, to find out. Let me give you a name, it's definitely going on. People just want to check around the yard. I'm looking for school lunch, right, so they know if they're, uh, if they're with their child or not, that's what they're saying favorite. And there's opportunity for us to make improvements, and everybody's got the feedback that I'm. Let's talk about partnership. This past Saturday, it was a rainy Saturday. Weather wasn't the best, but our community members were the best. This year, just some photos from the Plainfield Family Festival. I was hoping to have Plainfield High School that Saturday. This event, a lucky initiative, our first lady, my Tammy Burden. And this initiative has simply gone on in New Jersey for the last few years. Our office, our health board, the family festival, which is to connect community members with resources. As we, our team particularly target communities that have higher rates of income or talent. Plainfield, uh, I think we kind of. Us, but I think this was a great event and, uh, we met hundreds if not thousands of community members. Giving information, learn about resources that were provided, and really showing what we can do as a community. I'm excited, uh, that we have the opportunity to follow up our own event, which will be the second annual Carpe Day. We provide resources, also some entertainment, and social awareness. This partnership, I want to take a moment to highlight that we've talked about this a few times. The relationship between our, our, this is as a memo to the board, so I want to take a moment to talk about. We're not enemies, we're not adversaries. Our job is to make Plainfield Public Schools that's. However, we also realize that there are some opportunities to, to partner and to collaborate. Particularly when we start to talk about things like shared services. There's one part of money that, uh, funds public education here in Plainfield. Piece of that gets taken from the district. Charter schools, but then we think also of services that a charter school may be paying for from another vendor. Not paying, it makes sense to partner and collaborate with the district so that those funds can actually stay here. As an example, if a charter school was doing a field trip. I'd take that money and pay it outside vendor when that money can come back here to Plainfield Public Schools. To help us maintain the same fleet of buses that are used to transport all students who are receiving throughout our school district. We also talked about opportunities, uh, workable collaboratively or professional development opportunities. We're using the same vendor, and I think the example that I've discussed with Dan. Station tour that we use in the district. All of our organizations use that tool. We were bringing them in to do a district-wide training or professional development. We increase our purchasing power, our working together to go and secure that vendor as opposed to. This is in our rep connection to the previous conversation we had in the start of the morning this night. That's a wage for us to reduce costs, to create additional opportunities to revenue inside of the district. And I think it's been said on multiple times by various members of the board that at the end of the day. Every child who receives an education that resides here, receives a point. Is a child that we want to see who set up this. Because, uh, education gives me a great opportunity to do this. What it looks like, uh, what this looks like in the total outcome would be collaboration compact. We would, uh, initiate with all our various schools. that we would uh initiate with all our various schools that discuss this, uh, pretty clear tense of what we would do. Make sure there's equity, accountability, which is something that board members have echoed. Discuss opportunities to collaborate and share services. This should be in, we'll go forward to a follow-up we've done on the day now, we keep the board updated. Moving on to uh finance operations group five. Here we're looking to uh bring in an additional uh revenue of one, one million dollars at least into our community. Sure, we have to update all facilities in the life of maybe the pool. Twenty-year capital maintenance and long-range facilities plan. If we've done a very good job of enhancing our facility, there's still some work we need to improve from some of our techniques. Have to think that we present in our budget uh for the fifth. Right now, we've brought in uh quarter of a million dollars in additional revenue that this is. At this point, we have sixty-five percent of all of our board group capital projects completed. Uh, we've done the quarterly review confirming our schedule performance. We want to ensure that projects are completed on time within the budget. And lastly, uh, this, this goal or, or strategy of implementing a grant writing team that will be fully operational with the applications. I'll be funding opportunities. So this is something that it's been a way, we, we have identified some opportunities, but there are also some grants that are not full. So just want to be clear about, you know, what that looks like, because it would be a tough role for us while these conversations are taking place nationally, current opportunities are being drawn up. It doesn't mean that we won't go out and try and put our best foot forward to get the opportunities. Now, uh, moving on to the second. Any questions on the first part, how to get to this? Questions? Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school performance reports, they have to be available, provided the update to parents. Regularly to. Public education website to review the district's performance report. So I have some uh information to share this evening, I'm keeping it at a, at a high level for this conversation. This slide really just speaks to what the school performance reports are, how they align uh with each student's succeed act, which is a federal requirement, and also the HJD original requirement. The school performance report, you have detailed information, detailed detail as well as summary. Not just the district, but every school. These resources are also translating. This is uh the homepage of the school performance report. Again, by clicking, you can read tabs at the bottom, you can look at the state report, you can toggle between districts, or you can go. What kind of information do the school performance reports include? Those reports include our school district overview, demographic information, information detailed about college and residence, graduation for secondary data points, school climate environment, staff information as well as school capability, and also school narrative information. This slide highlights updates to the fourth, which will do additional information on. Ism, we also have information on whether or not current or former multilingual learners are earned by literacy. Shout out to our district uh for having. For our literacy. Beautiful, with a downed road. There's a little expansion, so the big uniform of our participation. People wasn't attracted recently. There's information on the discipline of the rules. There's a new high school persistence and a federal six-year graduation rate. We're from having just four-year graduation rates, five years, the state is not calculating a six-year. Here are our student enrollment demographic, uh, that potential for our district. Our district has. Do increases and our student enrollment over the year. I want to be clear, uh, the difference of what you will see on the budget presentation versus the end of year number. Enrollment that is shared during the budget presentation, you will see, uh, for us this school year, it shows the enrollment as of October fifteenth. Reason we show that number is because that is typically what you use in fact. District's state D that we see, that is roughly a, a coverage of. Our demographics here, uh, we can show an increase in pretty steep increase, I would say, for our students involved in the category. Years, our percentage of uh, obviously multilingual learners that. Has increased by a little over four percent, but we have uh been consistent on something. Moving on to our student growth overview, the state monitors our student growth percentages. And to ensure that we meet that target of a twenty percent range of our student growth percentile. These are our results for the district, seeing a slight decrease on the LA side. Slight of that, but we are still met our targets for student growth. Now, moving on to our NJ SLA and uh NJ GP. Our proficiency grades are already probably. For NJ uh SLA on the LA side, the district uh. Lowered at fifty-two percent, add that proficiency grade to seventeen. Lowered the stakes uh. On participation rates, all these assessments continue to increase, which is good, but we also have to show stronger outcomes uh for that. Though we are showing that increase. Moving on to our graduation rates and pathways. There, you will see on the slide that there is a difference between the state's population, federal population. Maybe the federal population is not included. Some of the compensation you receive in New Jersey. Our graduation rate has increased. Going down to twenty twenty-two school year at seventy-two point two percent. Saw a decline in the uh. Graduation rate at seventy-seven point one percent, while twenty-two school. Five-year graduations, uh, rate of train to our decline last year. You want to see a decline, but you want to see our student graduating in four years, not necessarily five. You see on the bottom, uh, where our. How we perform it as it relates to the state. This snapshot here uh gives us a comparison of the district as it relates to. Where, where we stand with our graduation rate, federal level. These are the activities. Here the districts are trajectory. Close like decreasing in twenty twenty-three school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, so. Our containment to ensure that we're providing enough support. There are some things that I want to bring to the board from now, like this impact on our. I think we're all aware of the population that we. We're in our community. Also aware of, I look at some of the. I have some families who outright think that they've been afraid to be in children's school. We're still responsible for. They would that, I believe that impact will disproportionately affect the community. Here are. It shows our quality expertise, but it gives us a breakdown of quality expertise. You do notice higher rates at the lower levels in kindergarten and pre-K. Part, part of that is, in some instances, not all, but some parents have a challenging, but also not seeing uh the pre-K or kindergarten stays the same. For us, that's an opportunity to really educate parents about the force, uh, bringing, uh, bringing the children to school each and every day. Kindergarten. As we move forward, those rates really remain constant or consistent. About twenty-three percent until we hit high school. I think we all kind of know that happens once we hit high school. I think students are, are making the decisions on their own about getting to it from school. And I think there again is another opportunity for us here to really work with our students to stress the importance of being in school. Moving forward to our uh, the state-wide teacher and graduate gap. See here what those numbers look like for the state. In the state of New Jersey, eighty-one point eight percent of all teachers are white. Eight point six percent are expansion. Six point four percent are African. Two point five percent are Asian, zero point four percent Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander. Zero point one percent American Indian or Latin American native. And zero point three percent reported to a more recent. Also see to the right-hand side, those same demographic rates for students throughout the state. Think something is very glaring, when you have a conversation about representation. Ethnic groups and having students see someone who reflects them in the classroom. It shows that those numbers are very often, the state numbers. There's room for improvement there. As we move forward to our uh school district. Have some similarities, but I think you're doing a better job. Backing with our rich teachers now. Thirty-eight point eight percent of our teachers are white, twenty-four point nine percent are Hispanic, thirty point four percent are Black. American, five point four percent Asian, zero percent Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander. Uh, zero point three percent American Indian or Latin American. Zero point two percent of the forty-three. Think those numbers uh show that overall we have more, a little more diversity in our district. But it also does show that there's an opportunity. Don't forget again the fact that regardless of the person is ethnic. However, the most important thing is that they are highly structured, high structured. And so we'll continue through our group effort to target and put our attention to that. Moving on to our uh college and big career readiness. Percentage of twelve graders who took, took the ACT during the school year. Nine point five percent compared to sixty-two point seven. Zero point nine percent for ACT compared to seven point three. Percentage of our students who were enrolled and learning who were advanced placement courses. Percentage of students enrolled in the enrollment coursework is at nine point nine compared to the state at twenty-six point nine. Percentage of CTE concentrators at the district, one percent, just slightly below the state at ten point four. Percentage of students who are earned entry value credentials for outside the district. State number is two point two percent. Percentage of twelve graders who earned a seal of belligerency in our school district. Moving on to uh student safety in the district. I'm very proud of the, that our team has enhanced our safety and security protocol, investing in the appropriate equipment and technology to make our students. So when we look at our comparison, uh, let's see. We were reading at the school district, as a school district in twenty twenty-four school year. I want to highlight that the district is the incident for one hundred. By the state of, we say average. That number is two point three five, right, means for every one hundred students in the district on a state level. However, in our district, that number is one point seven nine. We should really, really be proud of that. That is a high trade work, people have said over time, Plainfield Public Schools are not dangerous. Our schools are safe virtually. Our early childhood education in the district, this shows our enrollment trends. We've seen an uptick every year as it relates to our number of students. We are here as a school district, we're ready to serve. Happy to hear Governor Murphy's push on sure that we're providing these opportunities for students. However, there is opportunity for us to improve. Some of our work that we've done with our marketing. Think uh some of our community members are coming, I want to think of. Coming to me with me and my team members and talking about some of the gaps that exist. The opportunities I think for us to. Tell you a bit of partnership with some of my businesses. Let them also share the message about why pre-K is important for us, and particularly that is re writing when you sit in. I also think that there is an opportunity for us to establish partnerships. And also with, with doulas, right, to provide information early. Right, so if someone is given, uh, uh, a family, mother is giving birth in the city of Plainfield, they reside here. We should be front, center, be in position to give them all the information we need. Preschool education and what's provided, because once a child is born, they, they hit preschool in that three. That time goes by like that, and I can tell you for. My position as a parent of my children when I was already picking about, what's the next school, where are we going to get them to school, start looking at opportunities, even though they were just born, that time really goes by quickly. And I think that having that information upfront as early as possible can help our parents understand that they can place it to our pipeline and know that the resources and the connections are available. Who did kindergarten, we saw a slight uh decrease there. And our parents, if you are enrolled in our pre-K program, you are going to be old and less than our kindergarten. And that's our job to make sure that we keep and retain who we've done that for the last few years. Supports and services, this shows the staff ratios here in our organization. I want to, there's some large ratios that are. Want to address those. Students to librarians slash media special, that is a very, very difficult position to do. We don't have many uh librarians and media specialists, but we do, do our best to make sure that we. Those teachers accept us and buy, the support that students. We already addressed this ratio with our nurses, so twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that was a very high ratio. But with the board's support, we were actually. District, those ratios are a lot lower now. Our students to counselors, our professional school counselor ratio, this uh state number is being calculated here to show our professional school counselors across the grades K to twelve. Professional school counselors at this present time in our district support students at the second level. Ratio of professional school counselors to students is one to one fifty across grades sixteen to twelve. That ratio is one of the lowest ratios we've seen. Students to psychologists, that is another. Hard to staff, low for school districts. Outside of services and vendors that we contract with. Last piece is students to. Last piece is students to substance awareness schools. That support is primarily provided usually at the second ever level. So I think when you see that number, it is a little, it's a little misleading because we wouldn't necessarily have substance awareness schools at the regional schools or kindergarten. And the same thing applies to our students. Additionally, that is the individual, the individual who holds that title is the person who oversees. But we don't just have one, we need at least two in our schools if you have. Our schools, here's a list of schools that are currently externalized schools. As a part of the attachment under the superintendent session, there are individual reports for the most recent performance cycles, which are about the status of our current graduate schools. Also refer to our status. We did not have any schools go into classified as schools in this category. Best time of our six years, our school year, and we're working very hard to keep those those particular statuses. Thoughts and views, see the reports, they're very promising. Happy standing here today and to say it is our individual. Recently completed our walk-throughs of all of our schools. Those have been seen at all our elementary schools. Mr. Aponte has stepped up to the challenge. Passed a difficult conversation for the first two years, but great conversation. Sometimes you have to have those conversations, right? Age, we had that in mind, but he has stepped up and his team behind him, we're behind him, and we really expect them and the rest of our schools to be like this. Proud to the rest of the team who were just kind of stopped that out because we were nice. Here on this slide, we just talked about how schools are classified to internal. Physical criteria, active engagement, aggressive, graduation, which will apply to high schools, progress towards English education. All of these students successful. Then we can target support a conversation. But we do use the annual school plan, all schools, whether they are do that model because it allows us to be in alignment with the Department of Education. It gives us a framework, a framework for monitoring and tracking. We have representatives from the Department of Education, including all principals on Thursday of this Sunday to discuss the expectations for annual school plan. Parents, uh, you can reach out to the school or to the district, you can allow us to talk. There's also a stakeholder, a community guy, which is located in the
So, I love the fact that you included Barlow in the conversation. So, as other commissioners have cited in going to different conferences, one of the conferences that really inspired me was how we can turn around a high poverty district and really like work to so really excited to hear about Barlow. Do you know we can link, we can set thoughts on the improvement.
So I think after we go through the third performance cycle, we'll have that in the state coming in. Performance cycle, we've even aligned the district's performance cycles to the state. Those performance cycles are in February, February, December, April, right at that mark, we'll prove how third performance cycle is going to come through. Overall performance will change. I'm sure that we have more of that information. And we've done something in Plainfield Public Schools that I'm not sure. As a result of the school district either comprehensive reports as one of the statuses, that would be maximum for high schools. Those schools are required to have executive coaching for the principals and assistant principals. We've provided, we've been providing coaching initially, structured coaching for all principals and assistant principals. We work with school education, they provide coaching, leadership and executive coaching. So, my executive leadership team cabinet, also entire district administration. Turn around schools. The thing with that is how to give us that alignment, getting everyone of the same age. Two years ago, goals were being developed. The goals that were being developed at the school, I would be in the line with the goals that were being developed at the district. We literally walked into a school and had a conversation. Principal, the principal could have been talking about how they, how they didn't make their targets. But we were nowhere near making that target at the district, because that really wasn't that aligned. It wasn't a coherent conversation or discussion taking place about that. I feel really good about working out. We have implemented continuous movement cycles, constantly talking about data, what's working, what's not working. Do we just, do we abandon, do we adopt something new? We had to go through a process of learning that. A cultural shift in our organization, right there. Yes, it feels it, and I know that we never had it in the right place. There are good questions. Very much.
Thank you, you're too kind.
Alright. Okay. Before we move on, I want to entertain a motion or maybe entertain a motion to, um, walk on resolutions for two things. Um, for the board to authorize our auditors to do a comprehensive audit and analysis with regard to the pilot and to authorize Mr. Hassan to request for direct payments with regard to the approved pilot agreements based on his memorandum that he sent to the board. Two separate resolutions that I want to walk on. So, Mr. Cox, I don't know, okay.
I drafted the pilot resolution.
Yeah, okay. And I talked with, um, the board's counsel about the language for the other one, so she could send it to Mr. Cox. He could send the I mean, obviously, pending approval from the board, but
I just unlocked it. I got to refresh. We just got to refresh.
Okay, and Ms., um, she's sending you to the other one. Yeah, I don't, we have to make sure the link for the one that Vic was talking about, I'm not sure. That's not what I'm talking about right now. We need to make sure, yeah.
So you want me to read the resolution for the first one, Mr. Hassan first? While y'all work that up?
No, she sent it to you.
I just sent it to the auditor.
So you could read both of them.
Gotcha.
And then we need to work out the other one.
So the walk-on items, we'll start first with the one under the office of the superintendent. It's request for direct pilot payments from the city of Plainfield to the Plainfield Public School District. Whereas the Plainfield Board of Education is committed to securing equitable financial resources to ensure the highest quality of education for all students within the Plainfield Public School District. And whereas, under the long-term tax exemption law NJSA forty-eight colon twenty dash one at sequence, municipalities may enter into payments in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements with developers to stimulate redevelopment in designated areas. And whereas pursuant to these agreements, municipalities receive annual service charge from developers in lieu of traditional property taxes with a required five percent remitted to the county and no statutory allocation to the school district. And whereas pilot agreements reduce the local property tax base by excluding the value of the pilot-covered properties from the municipality's net taxable valuation during the life of the agreement, thereby preventing the Plainfield Public Schools from receiving any school tax revenue from these pri, these properties, excuse me. And whereas the loss of property tax revenue attributed to the pilots may be adverse, may adversely impact the calculation of the school district's local fair share under the School Funding Reform Act, SFRA, resulting in a heavier reliance on state aid and potential fiscal burden on non-abated taxpayers. And whereas, in the best interest of the students and taxpayers of Plainfield, that the Plainfield Public School District receive a proportionate share of pilot revenues to offset this impact and support educational programming. And whereas, a fair and transparent method of calculating such contribution would be applied to the district's annual tax rate to the total annual pilot payments made by, made to the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved, the Plainfield Board of Education respectfully requests that the city of Plainfield remit to the Plainfield Public School District an annual payment equal to the total annual pilot payment multiplied by the school district's tax rate for the fiscal year. For example, two point one four for fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. And be it further resolved that the board directs the superintendent to formally communicate this request to the mayor and city council of Plainfield to initiate further discussion towards an intergovernmental agreement or memorandum of understanding that supports the recommendations. And be it further resolved that the board urges continued collaboration and transparency between the city of Plainfield and the Plainfield Board of Education in all matters involving redevelopment initiatives and pilot agreements to ensure that the interests of the city's public school students are fully represented and protected. This will be walk-on item number three, under the office of the superintendent as an actionable item for the board. So I think to answer that question succinctly, Commissioner Gray, we would first have to know the full extent, under this resolution, the full extent of pilots in a given year, and then multiply it by the tax rate, so do
When we got a fiscal fine, what we received was that the payment was somewhere around forty-five thousand dollars, which is not enough in order to close the gap that we have.
So I believe you're talking about the forty thousand dollars that Mr. Hassan spoke on previously, which was from an older, a much older pilot agreement where the city, uh, did pay a portion of it. It was not an ongoing thing, which is, I believe, the aim of this resolution, to make it an ongoing thing, that whenever the city has a pilot, a multiplied tax rate proportion would come to the school district.
Can you define how much will we permit that to the district?
We don't have that number.
Because I understand that the pilots are no longer, we've basically given out all the pilots that we possibly give. So I'm just concerned that we're getting involved in municipal politics because there's a very old reason.
So, yeah, I
Clarify, you're in tune.
So I'm confused, I'll be honest. There have been multiple discussions about this. And I believe my feedback to the board has been, what's the ask? Right, and I was asked at the last finance committee meeting, right, to put together a recommendation of what could be utilized as the ask to at least start conversation, because at this point, there's just been a lot of discussion, but no formal ask has been made. To answer your question about what that universe looks like, we have to do a full analysis on it. Now I provided an example that showed, you know, if there was a pilot program that was worth twenty million, right? And that was a small number, that was your response, like the forty-two thousand, that's very small. It is, but when you look at it as a request to receive an annual payment for the life of the pilot, that adds up. Right, so that was the, the request. And that is some of my understanding based on advice from prior counsel and the memo they drafted regarding the impact of pilots. I believe that is similar to what the county will receive. They just call it a service, a service charge, if you will. I'm not saying that what I propose is the, is the best. And I don't think there's a model and example of what that is, because from my understanding, we would be the first school district to, to be able to make such an agreement if we're successful with this. So if you have any feedback or recommendations or any changes.
Right, no, so my recommendation is that, and I think it's like renting and owning, right? So asking for money is the equivalent of renting, right? I don't want to rent, I own a home here. I want space for our burgeoning, like, student population, right? So if we ask for space, do we not, do we not have the ability to own that space, right? Is it possible to ask for space in addition to asking for payments? Right, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, let's just go all the way. Ask for space that we need for our, our district.
So are you recommending to add additional language to the resolution?
Yeah, add additional language to include space, let's own and rent. Is the board opposed to that? Do we not need space?
Oh, we do, but there, and then lies the question of what space? The space is already owned and occupied by the developers who have the pilots. So how do you think we're going to own that space if they already have it, unless they're going to sell it?
The developers, instead of giving us a payment, we just basically asked them basically to develop the space for us.
But we can't have that conversation if we're not at the table.
I thought we were at the table, we had a board liaison.
No, the board liaison doesn't give us anything, the memorandum of agreement would give us that, that position, and that's something that
This is how we enter into our conversation about the pilots, by way of having Mr. Hassan do this ask, and if we're successful, then we can proceed with those particular conversations. I don't think the, the MOU or this resolution is outlining any of the particulars, but it's given us a chance to have a direct ask of the city of Plainfield so that now we can communicate regarding this impact that it has on our district.
I think that's a good prima facie argument to make. I like it.
Mr. Cox?
Second resolution, uh, it's a resolution authorizing a comprehensive audit of pilot programs. It'll be walk-on item under business operations. It'll be walk-on item under Business Operations, number 13. Whereas, the Plainfield Board of Education recognizes the importance of ensuring financial transparency and accountability in all sources of revenue impacting the district. And whereas, the district seeks to ensure that all payments in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements executed by the city of Plainfield are in compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are administered in a manner that maximizes the revenue for the benefit of the students and taxpayers of the district. And whereas, the board deems it necessary to appropriate and conduct a thorough independent review of the city of Plainfield's pilot agreements over the past 10 years, including an analysis of enrollment trends and the financial impact of charter school growth on district funding. Now therefore be it resolved, the Plainfield Board of Education hereby authorizes the district's auditor to conduct a comprehensive 10-year audit of the city of Plainfield's pilot program to include, program, excuse me, to include a full review of all pilot agreements entered into or maintained by the city of Plainfield from 2015 to 2025 that have a potential or realized fiscal impact on the Plainfield Public School District. Two, an analysis of financial implications of these agreements on the district's funding, including but not limited to the revenue lost or uncollected. Number three, a study of enrollment trends and the impact of charter school expansion on the district's financial health over this period. Number four, recommendations if applicable for recovering potential lost revenue and ensuring future compliance with statutory fiscal obligations. Number five, a collaboration with appropriate city officials and legal counsel as necessary to assess and analyze relevant data and documentation. Be it therefore further resolved that the superintendent of school and the school business administrator are authorized to provide the auditor with all the information and resources necessary to fulfill this directive and to report the findings of the audit to the board upon completion.
All right. Now, yeah, can you explain how we do that again for the public? What we- The one Commissioner Webb was referring to.
Yeah, I mean to revise, make a motion to revise, right?
So I'd like to make a motion. And I would like to move to revise the preliminary budget that was submitted on March 18th to reflect the 0% tax levy increase with no increase to the current tax level.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Smith that the board revise the preliminary budget submitted to the county to reflect the 0% increase. You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, I'll call the roll on this one. Commissioner Vice President Webb?
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Commissioner Dr. Harris?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hembry?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Malone?
No.
Commissioner President Wyatt?
Yes.
Five yeses, four nos. There'll need to be a revision. I did pray in light of the constant communication surrounding this. Budgetary reductions, which delay some items to future budgetary years, which would allow for a scenario where there is a 0% increase on the tax levy, as well as maintaining, as directed, maintaining the withdrawals from both capital and maintenance reserves as was initially submitted, excuse me, during the preliminary budget. If you give me a few seconds, I can read what that adjusted, those adjusted budget numbers would be. So I'll just, I have those resolutions prepared. I can move the resolutions over if you just give me a couple of seconds. Couple minutes, excuse me.
Is it possible in the interim, we could discuss what the cuts would look like? And what's gonna be affected by the cuts?
We had that discussion earlier.
We can have discussion in the public, Madam President. What's gonna be cut?
We had that discussion in the public earlier.
No, let's have the discussion on what the cuts mean with a 0% tax increase. What's gonna get cut, guys?
Relax, relax.
Because my daughter relies on special education here.
Okay, you're not the only person that has daughters that rely on special education.
Yeah, so explain what's gonna get cut. You wanted the title, now lead.
Does anybody else have any discussion? Thank you.
We did a recess? Now we're gonna do a recess.
Definitely need one.
I'm sorry, can we acknowledge what we're waiting for?
We're waiting for the resolution to be added.
Okay.
Then we have to go into public comment.
Who's waiting? The students.
They was waiting for a round? Where'd they? They also- I didn't know they were still here.
It's the old leadership.
We're waiting for stuff to be moved over.
Right this second, so I can read all of them into the record. Understood. Madam President, I have the resolutions prepared now, available to be viewed by the public. There'll be walk-ons, item number 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 under Business Operations. Number 14 is the tentative 2526 budget, excuse me, for the fiscal year 2526, to include a general fund budget of 327,927,388. Special revenues totaling 333,833,478. Debt services, 3,405,000. Total base budget of 364,764,916. Of that wit, to include a 26,018,540 in tax levy, which maintains a 0% increase. Debt services in the amount of 1,125,328 for a total revenue in tax levy of 27,143,868. Number 15, as a part of our budget, after speaking with the county, we have a semi corrective action plan. The corrective action plan for us is relative to not having 90% participation in the semi-program and meeting the projected revenues by not having that 90% participation. The revised necessary travel-related reimbursement, which was a part of the budgetary cuts identified that did a flat funding, close to a flat funding for total travel, actually is a slight reduction in travel for the year of 2526. The capital reserve withdrawal is maintained at 1,100,000 as previously submitted in the budget. And the maintenance reserve withdrawal is maintained at 1,000,000 as previously submitted with the first budget. But I did add that as a part of the totality of resolutions as they need to be submitted to the county upon ratification this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. We can now move on to public comment.
Make a motion open public comment.
Do we have a second?
Properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Malone. That the board now open up public comment at this time. You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Carrie, and I'll read the public comment statement before we get started. At business meetings, privilege of the floor will be provided for 30 minutes to the public prior to the voting of committee reports. Members in the public and attendants will have the opportunity raise concerns during this period of the meeting. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of three minutes. This time is not transferable from one individual to another. Privilege of the floor is now open.
Good evening.
Somebody up front.
Good evening. Will McCambell, 1404 Highland Avenue. Just going over what just happened during the meeting, I think there's a lot of exclusion to the public. We're sitting here wondering what's going on with no explanation given to us as to exactly what is happening. And a big part of the problem is the fact that we don't have copies of the agenda, like hard copies. I know that we are in a digital age, and that's fine, but there are some people who still rely on hard copies. I'm one of them. So to be at the meeting, not to have something to look at, to refer to, is a handicap. I was able to look at someone's digital copy, and one of the things, I believe it's on the agenda for a policy change regarding the, I think it's R1, regarding, let me see where it is. Disclosure on the Oprah request, it has something to do with Oprah requests. And limiting the information that the public can access regarding sales, purchases that the district makes. Well, first of all, that's public information. And to restrict the public from viewing it, I think is, I'm not sure that you're clear on what the process should be. I believe it's on sales or purchases that the district would make on real estate matters. That's just public information anyway. So why you would have a policy to say that the public cannot view those kinds of documents is just not clear to me.
Do you have more questions?
Will that question be answered?
We would need you to finish your questions, I'm looking into that now. But you can finish your question.
The other issue is presentation of the budget. The discussion I heard really was not clear to me exactly what we're talking about with the zero, I think it was a zero budget, zero something.
Increase, thank you.
Zero increase in taxes. And, you know, what that reflects in terms of how cuts or changes are gonna be made to the budget. I think the public is entitled to know exactly what we're doing with this budget. There was a lot of discussion about it the past few weeks, and we deserve to know. There was a lot of discussion about it the past few weeks, and we deserve to know exactly what the cuts are. And if there are cuts. That'll be the end of my questions, because I don't have all my notes together.
Thank you. So the policy that you're referring to was, and I'm just going to clarify this for the public. This policy that you were referring to were updates mandated by the state. So we can give you further clarification based on those specifics of that update. We can contact you and give it to you via email. I've been told that before. I hope that I do get it.
We'll make sure you get it. You're welcome. Next up.
Good evening. My name is Kishi Gepinado. I live at eight thirty Adams Circle. The last meeting we were at, there was a lot of people here talking about their dissatisfaction with the budget in, with the tax increase. And now here we have nobody. Interesting. Anyway, I have a problem with that, because people only seem to come out when it's directly affecting them. And no one think about the little people that is in need of us taking care of them. So at some point, it's feel like we're not, we're failing our children. The reason I'm up here tonight is because I definitely do not agree that we should have a zero tax increase. I think that is going to negatively affect all of us in the long run. And I work with the most vulnerable population that is in need of the most services. And I really do not wish to see my poor babies not have the service they need, because adults make decisions for adults instead of making decisions for our children. And I am very passionate about this, because I'm there every day seeing what my children need and seeing what they are getting from what we have, and knowing that even with all the support that they receive, they still need more. And for us to go and sit here and have a discussion about them not having budget cuts, I can't run my classroom without the aid of the support staff that's there to take care of my children. From the counselors, to the teacher assistants, to the OT, to the P, like, my children need these things. And when you put cuts in, it's going to directly affect those babies that are the most vulnerable and in need of everything. So I hope that when we're thinking about not having, whether it's a two percent or six percent, I have no idea, what's the best service. But I know what the superintendent asks for is, we at least need to meet the four and a half million. I hope you guys really think about how can we get there without first going into a reserve, because that doesn't make sense, because we have no way to replenish it. And figuring out how to make sure that you're giving all our children what need, and not just thinking about how it affects adults. Okay? So I hope you guys, whatever decision you are making, which I'm totally in disagreement with the zero percent, that you go back and you really think about, how is this going to affect these poor babies when you have all these cuts? And how is it going to affect citizens, the citizens of Plainfield who work in the school district if we have to cut their jobs? Because that's going to affect us anyway. So I hope you guys really, really think about these things that might affect us all as a city. And make sure that these children get really want, be, be the person who steps into the arena, make the decision that nobody likes. Be the person who steps into the arena and be brave enough to be okay with people not liking who you are. Be the person in the arena who's brave enough to make sure that you're there for our children, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in the public?
Good afternoon. Oh, I should say, good evening. Keith Cosson Jr., President of the Plainfield Education Association. I sat in the back of that room tonight and really was torn about whether to get up at this microphone, because I know how some of the headline lines might play out, that the PEA president, who does not live in this town, is going to get up and say what should be done with taxes. However, I am a product of this town. I am a product of the public school system. And I am here because I represent one thousand three hundred and eighteen staff members in this town. You hired a superintendent as an expert on what to do and how to move Plainfield Public Schools forward. And the expert in the room told you that the bottom will fall out if we do this. So today, we are kicking the can down the road for the bottom to fall out next school year. We are kicking the can down the road with a president who has all but said he's coming for us. We're kicking the can down the road with a governor's election coming up and not knowing which side they're going to be on with education, if we're going to be flat funded, if they're going to cut money, if we're going to get more money or not. And we don't know what's going to happen. And the expert in the room has said, "The bottom is going to fall out." I have to go and look in people's faces tomorrow and tell them, "The people who are elected to make the decisions just said, 'Let the bottom fall out.'" That is not a good feeling. I get it. I understand. Raising taxes, I get it. We're all living paycheck to paycheck at some point. But if the expert in the room is telling you that this is going to make the situation worse and that we don't have a way to replenish what we have, what are we going to do? How are we going to move forward? We had months and months of strategic planning on how we can move the district forward, and now here we are, making a decision to say, "Oh, just let it fall apart next year, and we'll try to figure it out." That is not acceptable. And so I'm telling you to expect, the same way that you all said, "Oh, I spoke to the members in this town," I'm expecting you to speak to the same individuals who are going to be on the chopping block. And I'm asking you to share that information, just as it's been asked today, so that these people aren't wondering what they have to do. What job will they or won't they have? And if this will be East Orange next school year? Because those are the questions I'm fielding from my phone at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in public?
Hi, good evening. Wow, this is a really tall podium, and I am a very short person. I'm going to go up on my tippy toes. Laura Miranda Brown, thirteen forty-five Highland Avenue. First of all, I, I want to state that Ms. Campbell, Mrs. Campbell was stating, was reading off of my computer, and the policy that she's, that she is referencing specifically on the top says that it is monitored and other reasons. It does not say that it is mandated. And I think that her point is that these are publicly available real estate transactions, and to include publicly available real estate transactional information in a district records and reports policy indicating that that information would be confidential is kind of silly. Should be amended and should be fixed. This is a first reading. You have an opportunity to fix it. That's first. Second, you all got a lot of pushback, deservedly so, for such a large tax increase. And then you came forward and changes were made. You all presented a different version of that budget. You said, "Okay, we'll hold off on this ramp building project here. We'll change tag here. We'll make some changes." And I, I'm a member of this community too. My children go to this school in this building. I, I am here every month. I'm sure you're tired of seeing me. You didn't really hear people complaining after the revised budget. People heard you all. There's certainly always going to be pushback. There's always going to be questions of how you're spending money. How is it that when I started coming to these meetings in twenty seventeen, our budget was of like two hundred and forty million dollars? Now we're at a three hundred and twenty-six million dollars. That's an incredible increase. That didn't happen on the local tax levy. That's on state aid. Where did we allocate that aid? I'm not sure. We're never given a line-by-line budget in the public. We're always presented with this simplified, easy-to-use reader manual. I don't want that. You know, we're all adults. We can all look at spreadsheets. We can all understand numbers. And if you provide this information to the public in a reasonable timeframe, people can look at it. I haven't seen line-by-line numbers. I have heard numbers. For example, this evening, one of the resolutions, which as always will be passed via consent agenda, which again, to Mrs. Campbell's point, is very difficult for the public to follow, because it requires us to bring our computers to see what you all are doing, and you vote once on everything, all at once. That's not transparent, and that's not open. So on tonight's agenda, you're going to have one million dollars plus for the pool. I've been hearing about this pool for years. The pool continues to need more and more. Do I think our students deserve a pool? Yes. Do I think that this pool is now made of gold? Also, yes. Another million dollars. You are telling us you are going to cut funding. You're not telling us where. You're not telling us who's going to get cut. You now have teachers worried. I'm worried for my kids. I'm worried for all of our kids. Because the very people we need in our schools every day are the people who are teaching our kids to read and write. And that, the information we got tonight is that they are not reading and writing.
Ma'am, that is your time.
Motion to extend our time.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Gray and seconded by Commissioner Malone to extend Mrs. You've heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? Being none, all in favor? All opposed? Alright ma'am.
Thanks. I am delighted that our students are getting better. And I don't expect kids to be able to immediately increase their proficiency in anything, immediately either. That's not reasonable. They're humans. But we cannot be patting ourselves on the back that eighty-five percent of our students can't pass a test, and the pass rate is a sixty-five. Like, that, that's just not okay. Our students are capable. They are smart. I come into this school, the students are engaged, and they are, they are interested. We are failing them. We are not expecting everything that we should expect of them. And, and that's a failure of adults. That's a failure of leadership. Please reconsider your votes. A zero percent increase seems silly. You all put forward a massive increase. You hurt your community. You made changes. There's no reason to cut off your nose to spite your face at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, do we have anybody online? Do we have anybody online? Alright, do we have anybody else in the public before we go? Okay, you can queue them up, please. Laura, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
We can't really hear you. Maybe turn your volume up some?
Can you hear me now?
Not really. Nick, is there a way that we can turn the volume up? Try now?
Can you hear me?
It's on your end.
District-based computer has turned up.
I don't, I still don't know. One more time? Can you try?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay. Lori Davis, fifteen Raymond Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. As a proud Plainfield homeowner and employee of Plainfield Public Schools for over twenty years, I have, I support Superintendent Hassan's budget proposal, the last one that he did, and the same as I support his strategic plan. I understood as a homeowner, a fraction of my property taxes support the school district, and I applaud the fact that there has been no ask of an increase in six years. I was physically at the meeting, but it went too long, and I had to come home to be with my children. Having been here for over twenty years, I can attest to the years when annual requests were made by former superintendents and approved by former board members, in which I and a few others spoke at the mic regarding the continuous need to request additional funds. I also understand as an employee, the hard work and dedication it takes to create a plan, secure funds, implement and reflect on the progress. Make no mistake, Plainfield Public Schools are making progress. Our Board of Commissioners' only employee is the superintendent, and when they approved his strategic plan from twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight, I am certain many questions were asked and many items were discussed prior to the vote of yes. We are living in a time where many areas of our budgets have increased. Homeowners' insurance, car insurance, groceries, utility bills, to name a few. And I understand the toll it takes on an individual or family when bill amounts increase. For those people who say, "I don't have children in Plainfield Public Schools," please understand, your property value is aligned to the success of our schools. As a parent of children who have gone through and are currently enrolled in PPS, I have seen the strides the school system has made and proudly attest to my oldest having obtained college degrees and my youngest to follow suit. As I stand in solidarity with the superintendent's proposal, let us continue to do the work of fulfilling the Plainfield Public Schools' mission statement. We, in partnership with our community, are accountable. Please understand, we are accountable for creating a safe, inclusive, nurturing learning environment for all students to achieve their maximum potential. And I will also include the ending of the former mission statement, "No alibis, no excuses, no exceptions." Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, Nick? Alright, motions closed. Public comment?
So move.
Okay.
She's there.
We don't see her here. Can you patch her through? Oh, there she is.
Hi.
Hi, hello.
How are you? My name is Ravi Campbell Lassad, and I live at thirteen oh two Marlboro Avenue. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. This has been a very interesting meeting, but I only really have one question, because most of the public comments have been aligned with what I was thinking. So the budget cuts aren't very clear. The budget isn't very clear. As Mrs. Laura Miranda Brown said, we don't know what the budget is line by line. And as people who are taxpayers, we'd like to see that, so we can have comparisons. My question is, as a member of the CPAG and a parent of a special needs child, how much of this budget is going to impact the special needs community? How much of the cut for zero percent is going to impact this community?
Is that your only question?
That is my only question.
Okay, thank you.
But I would like an answer.
We'll provide you with an answer via email. Thank you.
Well, can you sup, can you not only supply it via email, I think the public should know. Whether you supply it to me via email, I have a small support group, which is the CPAG and some other community members, but I think it should be supplied to all of the public. Can that be done?
Your sentiments are received. Yes, it can be. Thank you very much, Ms. Lassad. Is that on it? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Gray. At the board now close public comment at this time. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right? Motion carried.
Right. And I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Andrews. At the board now move this agenda as a consent agenda. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor? All opposed have the same right?
Mr. Cox, can you make sure that all commissioners are recused from their, okay, go ahead. Okay.
There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Want to clarify, that was Commissioner.
Webb.
Or did Webb said that?
That's Webb.
Thank you. Been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Smith that the board now approved the consent agenda. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? I will, I will denote all board commissioners abstaining from their personal reenactments if applicable. There being none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vice President Webb?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, but no to R1. Like the opportunity for it to be revised.
Miss, Commissioner Andrews?
Uh, no to P14, P17, P18. Yes, all others.
14, 17, and 18, you said?
Yeah, those in particular. P14, 17, 18.
Okay. So yes on everything except for P14, 17, and 18. Noted. Commissioner Gray?
Can you clarify what, what number again is the tax increase or tax decrease? That, with that resolution?
Budget resolution. Walk-on item number 14 under business operations that outlines the general appropriations as well as the tax levy.
So no to P11, no to P14, no to P15?
P11 wasn't anything with the taxes, just to let you know.
Okay. So no to P11. That had to do with the tractor trailers that were added on. Uh, the tractor trailers didn't come up in a finance committee meeting. It came up afterwards. They were sending an email. It didn't come up in the finance committee meetings.
Understood.
So I wanted to also see if we can amend the minutes in order to reflect that, the fact that the tractor trailer conversation never came up in a committee meeting.
I've, so we currently on your roll call vote.
Okay, all right. So yeah, so what, what number? Can you clarify what number is the minutes for the finance committee?
Is your device not working appropriately?
Yeah, it's not working appropriately. So can you, so we can get it voted over?
Finance committee meeting minutes for finance and operations is H1.
So no to H1, no to P11, no to P14, no to P15, no to P17, and no to R1.
All right, read this back.
Yes, sir.
One is a no.
Yes.
P11 is a no. Then P14?
P15, P17, and no to R1.
So you're a yes to P18?
Can you clarify what P18 is again?
Draw for maintenance reserve.
No, I'm a no on P18 as well.
Right. Commissioner Dr. Harris?
No to R1, yes to all others.
Commissioner Hembry? Commissioner Johnson?
Guess I shouldn't have took my computer. Well, I think I'm abstaining from, I'm a vote no for the walk-on regarding the budget. Is that on here?
That would be items P14 through 18. You abstaining or you're voting no?
I'm voting no for those and yes to everything else.
Commissioner Malone?
I'm a no for P14 through 18 and no for R1. That's it. I'm a yes to everything else.
Commissioner President White?
Yes.
For all items, ma'am?
Yes.
Madam President, all items have passed.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Webb and seconded by Commissioner Malone that the board now adjourned this meeting in the public. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, have the same right. Meeting adjourned at 11:35.
11:30 is wild to me.